Yeah, today if we look at the agenda all as well, our last day of strategic planning today. And we'll start off with Brad's strategic planning, then we're going to go into a review of your council goals, and then we will go through the process of prioritization and discussion. Depending on what the schedule is like, we will have to have watch for you or may not agree on how fast we go because it could be that we are done before lunchtime or remaining for two hours.
I can very much, I can play my game.
Yeah.
Do we have any exceptions? Do we have any?
Oh. Yeah.
All right. He's been set to far.
Okay. What time is the kickoff time, DJ?
Oh, I'm just playing, actually, we're going to go play golf, but I have dishwasher issues at my house that demand my attention.
It's not fascinating.
Brad, it's all yours, huh? Yeah, great. Feeling the pressure.
We have dishwasher issues at my house just because there's something really good up there.
Good morning. I think last year this probably would have been a little bit more of a maybe critical presentation because of the new folks. But now, given this year, I'm looking back at our schedule and having urban renewal be on topic on workshops several times. And I'm thinking that probably much of this is going to be just maybe a quick update. So I might just, my thoughts that I'll kind of just touch on the topic that's on the slide there. And then if you, as council mayor, you don't want to dive more deeply into that particular one we can, but it seems like for the purposes of this weekend and strategic planning, the last half of the presentation, which are the, you know, the projects, the actual projects, which you just had two and a half months ago workshop on the projects. But this might be a quick reminder, so I guess I got to do the other way. Yeah, so I mean, urban renewal authorized through the Federal Housing Act. Basically, it's a redevelopment mechanism. It's a tool to give the city and the separate urban renewal agency funding to do projects that are oriented around blight. We just last week issued the annual report that is required of the ORS. Thanks to Adam and to Lainie Howard, who is our consultant. So that's a report that has to be completed showing the prior year activity. And it does have to be sent to the taxing districts that are impacted by the urban renewal district. So we did that. You serve as the urban renewal agency, plan adopted in 2016, funding for the projects through tax increment financing, as you know. This is just a quick summary on the tax increment financing piece. Essentially, you had all those properties that were there in 2016. We drew a boundary around that district, so all the properties within that district, the tax rate was frozen at that rate, and then all the increased taxes over that time since 2016 go into the fund that becomes the revenue for the agency. This is another way to depict that program with that frozen base there at the bottom, and then the projected increment in 2016, you can see increasing there. We are more or less, I think, pretty close to what the projections were. We had the last year, you know, 2.3 million that was in there, and you can see 2021 kind of right around that two to two and a half, three mark in terms of the revenues to the agency. So here's another graph, bar graph, showing that relationship of that frozen base to the annual increase. And these are the seven districts that are impacted, that have, they're, we're not, are not getting the same amount of taxes that they were up to 2016, other than those three at the bottom under state statutes, the school districts and the Southern Oregon Educational Service District. Although that is technically frozen in 2016, there's a separate fund in the state that basically supplements that revenue they were getting. So they actually have continued to get the same amount of revenue that they would have originally. So those are the three italicized at the bottom there.
Can I pause you a minute? I think I can share the screen button out.
Oh.
Yep.
You made it.
Maybe he knows a better then.
All right, Jason, I won't echo. What? Oh, sixteen minutes into the chat. There we go.
That's fine.
Thank you, Darren. I just wanted to point it out, as soon as we provide the annual report to the Urban Renewal Agency Board on Monday, then the report will go out to the impacted tax districts right after that.
Oh, thanks for that clarification, Adam. This is basically what I just, yeah, I think that's where we have to. Yeah, so here's the boundaries of the districts, showing the percentage there. We had 18.3% of the city limits is the urban renewal, is the percentage, it's urban renewal district, the acreage. Zooming in on that, we're essentially talking about our commercial corridors. Other than the, there was an expansion, as you know, last year of the five acres up near, near Off of Terry and D. I mean, there was about five acres that was added to the district. And here's the list showing the projects and their amounts that are allocated throughout the whole life of the plan. That can be spent, the convention center is the largest one, and the council has talked quite a bit about that. So just under $51 million of total project allocations over the course of the 30-year plan. So this slide will sort the list of the 18 projects. And as I mentioned at the beginning, we can talk more or less about some of these as we want. Sewer plant, water plant, Adam can shed any more light on this, but this is the 18% contribution that is allocated to the debt service on both of those projects, and it's coming from urban renewal revenue. We have the North End Improvements. We have the Spalding area, both of those areas, there's up to 25% of the, of a project, specific individual projects could be funded through the, through the agency. North Sixth and Seventh Street Corridor, this has $4 million allocated to the sod improvements, which could include certain types of streetscapes, landscaping. Blinded buildings, this is not just limited to a certain corridor, but it's within the entire urban renewal area. If there are buildings that are deemed blinded, they could be using fundings to, or restructure, for engineering costs, things like that. The Northwest Industrial Area, we talked a little bit about that during your last meeting, so this is a little different than that Vine corridor. This is kind of some of the Washington Hawthorne, some of that area falls underneath this 3.2 million. And this is, this is specific to Vine, $575,000, also a 25% participation rate that is along that corridor. Building Rehab, this is, one of those is allocated specifically to sort of a partnership between the agency and property owners. This one is, does specifically call out low-interest loans as an option, although I think that we could technically use loans for all of them if the council chose to go that route. But this one does, does call out specifically the option for loans. Business Incubator, Innovation Hub, this is funding that we also have money in CDVG that's allocated to the Innovation Hub that Community Connections, Cat Bonney's organization has been working on. So this is specifically allocated to that. At the time, I believe the RCC project was then the main driver for including this in the urban renewal plan, which that particular partnership with RCC was no longer ahead, but money is still there to use for maker space. And then the Convention Center, we talked about that. Town Center Plaza, $1 million allocated for improvements. There's also, this also calls out retail, assistance with relocation for those eight businesses that are in Town Center Plaza right now. Public Parks, we have two of the public parks are eligible for funding underneath the urban renewal agency, Riverside and Reinhardt. Not, not all of Reinhardt falls within the boundary, but there are sections. I think one of the reasons it was, there's, there's a strip of Lincoln Road. If the fourth bridge was ever extended, adjacent to a portion of Reinhardt Park is where the Lincoln Road extension would continue across the river. That strip is included, it could be, urban renewal funds could be used to assist with, you know, with that expansion of Lincoln Road. Under Development Land, it's a fairly broad category, but a large one, $6 million. Streetscape study to, this is specific to the southeast industrial area. And then we have the downtown plaza, lighting, restrooms, that Grover's Market area called out to use funding for holding that project off. Housing Developments, this is one of the ones where Convention Center money that was allocated to the Convention Center was shifted, and we put in 20, some, $3 million into the housing development program to assist with affordable housing projects. This could also be used for, you know, affordable housing on the second stories in downtown. This one is not, you know, specific just to the, to that Winko area that ACTO has added, but as long as it's meeting the criteria of 80% AMI, developer comes in and demonstrates that they, they're going to provide housing at that level, anywhere within the district, money could be used for assisting with engineering costs or demolition costs or other things related to affordable housing. Swimming Pool has a $5 million allocation, and we'll talk more about that Monday at your workshop. And that's it.
DJ, a couple questions for you. That graph extrapolating the revenue, is that adjusted every once in a while to find out how much the urban renewal is going to garner over the next 30 years? Or is it more targeted for a certain amount of revenues? How's that, how's that determined or adjusted?
Yeah, my understanding is a formula that, you know, that they used at the beginning. But Adam, do you, you know, have you looked at that? My understanding is that, you know, that was just a projection at the time of the adoption.
Sure.
Yeah, Councilor Fazer, I've had the exact same question. We have not reanalyzed the assessed value of that frozen base yet because we're only just a few years into the Urban Renewal Agency. So I don't have the exact answer for you, but that is something that we should try and get reanalyzed. Perhaps our counselor, not counselors, our consultants could help us with that answer.
Okay, fair enough. And then something that was asked briefly during strategic planning last year and also this year, if we wanted to render some of those resources, you know, given that we only have $2.3, $2.5 million currently, is it a bit entertaining what you wanted to take on a project that cost more money than that? Is it, you know, borrowing against it? Or how would we render those resources that haven't quite been captured so far?
You want to take that out?
The debt, sure, the debt that we could issue from the Urban Renewal Agency, you know, they would underwrite our debtworthiness based off of the revenues that will be coming in in the future years. So it depends on how long we wanted the debt to be and how quickly we could get that repaid back. They'd probably also take a look at how quickly the revenue is increasing. Of course, if there's no development in the Urban Renewal Agency, then it's only going to increase by the 3% in that area as opposed to if we had a lot of development going on that was increasing the assessed value within the urban renewal area, they'd take that into consideration too. But we'd definitely be borrowing against future revenues.
Okay. And by, if I, you know, if they would underwrite, who would they be? What would be this, this understanding in the process? But who, or who would they be, the establishment that we would borrow against?
So we have our debt advisor, Piper Sandler.
I'm sorry.
Piper Jaffrey.
And you broke up a little bit when you said that. Could you repeat that, please?
Absolutely. So we work with our bond advisors, Piper Sandler, and I believe they changed their name to Piper Jaffrey now. But they work to try and get us the best interest rates on the debt. But there's an additional step, which is an underwriter who actually writes the debt. So our advisors help us get the best bang for our buck, and the underwriters evaluate our creditworthiness for when the bond is actually written and placed into the market.
Okay. Thank you very much. That answers my question. Changing gears a little bit into the pool, perhaps this is a discussion that we're going to be having on Monday. Since we've recently established that the location that we will remain, remodel, rebuild, I understand that we do need to stick an arm out into that area and put it into the urban renewal area so that we can apply those resources to it. Is that, is that something that's going to be discussed on Monday, potentially?
Well, I certainly think it would be an implication.
Sure.
If you, yeah.
Because we did entertain that 2020, I think, and then we decided not to because we went the road of a task force to kind of advise on what we should do with the pool, what is correct, presuming that we would still need to stick an arm out there and increase the area of the agency.
Right.
So to include the pool if we wanted to spend the resources there.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question, and it's about utilization of the funds for the whole 30 years. Is it, it's my understanding that if we are going to use anything even 30 years from now, it needs to be in the original plan, am I correct? Fit under that, the criteria by which we said we were going to do what we were going to do, is that correct?
Are you saying of those 18 projects?
Of those 18 projects with those, I mean, that's pretty much what we said that we were going to use it for. So, you know, say 25 years down the road, if something we wanted to add to it, is that a possibility? Or are they going to make up, I think, you can't really tell.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's just like you did in 2020 where you added, you know, the housing, you added the pool.
You just have to make a commitment to what you're saying. So that's something to go all the way along the road.
Right. The critical factor, you know, is, is that amount of, that $105 million of maximum indebtedness. You know, I mean, that's, that's really the number that, that you're playing with, but the project within that can shift around.
Yes.
Okay. So when we bond things, it comes at a cost, depending on the interest rate. What effect on the total amount available, does that, how much does that cost? What is the cost?
To take on the debt, you mean?
Yeah.
Like, how does that interest?
Because you can start advantage to do things now, especially with the interest rate. You know, like the pool is going to be $20 million five years from now, 20 years from now. I don't want to have that driver decision, but things get more expensive. So if you, if you bond it now and pay for it, whether it's through, and there's different funding sources, it could be through a levy, through ARPA, through, or combination with urban renewal dollars, then what is the cost of that just right? And I know when you use it, right, the fracture is really low. I mean, it was like 0.5%. I mean, I got some in my retirement portfolio with the bonds of climate falls that are like 1.5%. You know, they're really safe, but they're really low rated.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. You have, I would have to look that up.
Yeah, I'd say the most recent interest rates that we're aware of are somewhere around 3.5, but there are a lot of factors that go into what interest rate we get, including how much we, how much debt we issue. So I don't have a specific number on a, every single dollar amount that we could possibly consider.
Oh, cool.
I also, I can't remember exactly which is our, we do love stuff. So at last, I know we made a statement last time before you looked at it, I do know that and we're in the process of doing it. At this time, I remember we were talking about, so I'd say we know better how to call the locals who are in that urban renewal district, letting them know that they are in the urban renewal district, and there is money, it is a tool to develop and letting private people know what's available. Have you done that? I don't, we, we didn't, we didn't do that, so I'm just questioning whether we did.
Right, yeah, it did come up both, I think, at the community forum on urban renewal as well as at the council's workshop, but I mean, staff considerations that as a whole, the council really wasn't ready to focus energies there, in part because there was still some debate about the amount of money that is used by the city for city projects as compared to partnering with the private sector. You know, we could, that might really say a number of different things, but presumably it's going to open up the door for folks who, you know, are ready to make some improvements to their, to their buildings, to their property. We would, I think, want to have a pretty good idea of what percentage of the current balance that we would want to use to partner with, you know, with the private sector. I mean, are we using 10% of that money or are we using 50% of that money? I think that's that, that's an important policy decision.
So in that particular session, we decided this was the thing we could do is we could hit the task force for the downtown area in the Kinet Plaza to kind of give us that direction by just kind of studying and trying to find exactly where we are. You're right, we had a lot of discussions, but I'm trying to remember specifically what the direction was to the step. And it's, my understanding right now is where we are at, because we are in the process of evaluating Kinet Plaza to make a decision as to whether that may be a true focal point, right?
Right. Yep. I see the urban renewal, Adam, those would be two legs and are all the way around. We're trying to like manage all, so.
Oh, I agree, I agree. And so I'm saying, if you look at all this, you just, that's how you just see the obstacles that you're running with. And so I'm just kind of wanting to, I can remember that discussion when I did, don't remember whether it happened. So, and I do remember you had, you had at one point a discussion with some people in the private sector who made different things to get, you know, to get an idea of what they might, some information to give you, correct? What, what was their perspective?
We did, we did, yeah. And we have a two-page summary, which I'm happy to send out of what their comments were. Yeah. They're, they're, you know, they were widespread, as you can imagine, but their, one consistent theme of that meeting was, was to, number one, increase the awareness, just like the community forum, that was, that was key. They said we need to increase the awareness of this resource to the property owners and to the developers. And number two, they, they really felt that loans were probably, the grants were better incentive than loans. Those two themes that came out, that those six people were pretty consistent on, yeah. So can I just say one other thing about urban renewal? Every time we have a discussion about it, you know, we, I want to say we're rehashing the same information, but I feel like we need to get to a level where we're almost creating like a roadmap, you know, kind of like the thing that we have on the floor, but it's just for urban renewal because there's so many things in there, and there's, you know, which ones to be prioritized, which ones are a city's responsibility, which ones are we creating programs for, for people to take advantage of. I feel like it's hard for us to really get on top of it. It's going to take more than just, you know, a workshop presentation every three or four months. We're going to have to kind of focus more energy on it to kind of get that one. I think it's worth getting that one because there's a lot of resources there that we can utilize to do good with, so.
Yeah, I agree, to have a structured plan according, you know, that can be dynamic, of course, changing over time. But it's like what Joel was getting at and also Robert mentioned, when we're bonding against this, then interest rates are super low, inflation will only increase as guests work when, when the interest rates are going to be so minimal to cheat money, you know? I think structuring that plan and going in the direction of, so acting like we might see this here, so I agree.
Kind of another way to say that is, I know that if we, someone gives the figures, and I haven't, I don't think I have. I'm quite confident that if we actually looked at, when you figure inflation, when you figure potentially rising interest rate, 20 years from now, what is our $100 million, $150 million going to be worth? Generally, we're worried for it right now, which is the core interest rate. As soon as we do stuff, then if we're going to do it in another 15 years, $150 million, I'm just telling the staff that without any, you know, reference. $150 million, probably worth most 50, 20 years, or maybe even less than that, which is shocking. And if you get that shock, you actually look at those figures, that is going to be worth it. Then it's like, I got to spend it now, it's going to be worth it. So there's almost no reason to put things off, you know, there's, you know, you're not going to, I mean, die in turn. I think the question, my managers should not be able to add something to this, but my years now, this might not be worth it. Or it's going to be worth far, far less. So as soon as we move on this, the better.
So what do you, what do you think about ending all the agenda, sir?
Uh, sure, yeah. Sure, sir. Yeah, sir, if you do that. Yeah, it's just to reinforce that in the private sector who makes money off of these things.
Council presidents, sticky others.
And you got the Best Brothers, they make those. And you got the best brothers, they make those investments today. The best brothers make those investments today because of the cost of capital and the inflation and the increased interest rates.
Well, the purpose is to spark urban renewal, so if we sit around and wait for twenty years, basically, we'll grow instead of inspiring the renewal, then we're missing the point, so.
It's exciting, Sarah, it's exciting.
You need to take a look at the eighteen projects and what projects are city-initiated and what projects are private initiated. Because right now, we're talking about what projects, we're just going to, let's do it now, it's good to do a project now, that's great. But really, the key to urban renewal is to incentivize private investment. So the swimming pool, well, that's one you could do right now, that's, that's not a private investment incentive. Maybe some of the transportation stuff that's associated in there, you could incentivize to some degree. But the majority of the projects that are up there are up there to help incentivize private investment. And so you can do a little bit, but really, it takes that, and that's why an urban renewal agency is out there for thirty years, because you've got funding over a thirty-year period, and over that thirty-year period, you're going to be getting development coming in, and you have a tool to help incentivize that. So there's some of the things that are on there that would make sense to, to do that is under fully the city and there's no private investment. The other aspects of them really do have to have the right environment created, and you can help incentivize that by saying, okay, we're going to do this project, we're going to do whatever it is, we're going to put this up, we're going to do an RP, and we're going to, and you could do that. And that may take a small body, but you have to be specific on what you're doing, and a lot of it is, a lot of it is contingent upon for the success of the renewal, like to see private dollars coming in, buying and out of it, you know? It's projects at twenty-five percent, seventy-five percent private investment, except for something like.
And a reminder, and I will kind of remind you about that area, because what we need to remember is it is to incentivize private, and the whole purpose of it is to increase the tax base. You know, and what does that, it's private industry, it's not us going out and building something and then, and we're not collecting any taxes on it, we build it ourselves, is using that private money, using that twenty-five percent to inspire them to come in and do something. And that's, that's, I think, the thing that in my three years of looking back at what some other cities have done, the ones that failed are the ones that just went out and went, oh, we're going to build this, we're going to do this on ourselves, and then nobody came in and it just sits there, because it was the council's idea of what they got was going to spur the economy, and it didn't work. And so it just sat there like, so I think that's, that's what you have to, where you have to remember, you know, this is about them, getting them excited about coming in to where we're going to build and build it, and not have us do it. I just happen to think that as a big convention center, so it's kind of like a road to nowhere. So that's, I think, something we have to know, that this is to inspire private investment in our.
Um, that's a good point, there's no excited people like in this group today.
Yeah.
So, you know, and we're, one, one at a time, we're looking at a town center task force, we're looking at a task force we need this year, I mean, we're looking at one thing at a time. I mean, somehow, we need to publicize the fact that we are looking for partners, and we need to do it at a much faster rate than we're doing, because, you know, we're really fix much, one of these things, that we can make them up. I think we want to, we look at the heart rate, we need to go out and, and, you know, we, we can make the voices a little bit and then see what comes out, but we've got, we've got to actually put it out there that we are looking for partners.
And I agree, and that's why I brought up the point about the letters that go out, because, you know, who knows what person is sitting out in the background, thinking about something to do with their property that's in their urban renewal, that we are urban renewal, because we're not the private developer. So that's why I think there is value in just notifying, like, do you know, this pool's available, let us know, and then we ultimately, we make a decision. But like you said, to just focus on one little thing, is that's what we want, to kind of, the purpose, because the purpose is, you tell us what you see, what you visualize, and that, that's all we're going to have, is to go out there and say, here it is, let's go.
Every, every, every rank in town, every group of partners, everyone in town, you know, partners, and to not do that, which is, is almost, I agree.
But to do what you're doing is really, I'm going to key things, is to take a project and do this study, and have success with that project, that's going to be one of the best ways you can get word out to how urban renewal can help. And if you could have one to three big projects in urban renewal, you've got huge success. This task force that you formed could be that starting point. This could be huge, because that could incentivize that seventy-five percent private investment if, if it, if it comes out right, and what, that, that right there was part of, oh my gosh, which would be huge.
And maybe you can tell us, I don't, because I don't remember, the council, I don't remember, what, what unique factors were happening at the time that allowed the city to basically offer Travis twelve million dollar tax payment on this, is that something that could be created at any time, or was it part of the consequence of, of factors that allowed us to do that?
That's a good question. That was a little unique, because we were transitioning our enterprise fund from, it was, it was classified as a rural enterprise fund versus an urban enterprise fund. As you know, we are an urbanized area. Urbanized enterprise funds have a, a certain life expectancy, it's every five years, and they can be renewed for five years, etc. Rural or enterprise funds, I think, have a longer lifespan, which provides for larger tax payment. And so the tax, the twelve million that we were talking about for Travis and that project, it's only tax payment, he only gets that if he created like two hundred and fifty jobs or something like that, and, and put in whatever amount of million dollars, and he gets tax payment on the improvements. So he does have a larger, longer-lasting enterprise fund for that K Man Plaza that was, that was provided, and it was a rush thing, I remember that, it was like, we've got to watch this, we've got to watch this too, because we barely met that timeframe of trying to accommodate his request for him going from a rural to an urban enterprise fund, which already had a larger, so.
As I remember it, and I, and I wasn't really super focused on, I remember it, this particular case, really like to do it, based on the amount that he would invest.
Yes.
Take them retired jobs. And so in other words, anybody who were there or they, you know, potentially refurbished that plaza, and had nothing to do with how many jobs were created, I better remember what it was going on there. So, so that's still, that's still available, yeah, that's still available, and for someone to come onto that property.
Yeah, within that, within that timeframe, I don't know, I would have to see if it goes, I would have to see if it transitions to, if it's, is with the property or if it's with the project, I don't know, but you're right, it's, it's investment in FTE and investment in capital expenditures to help create additional FTE, which are the tax payment opportunities. And I don't know, I forget what the timeframe is, how many years ago was that? That was like, three years ago, maybe, four or five years ago, I forget.
But, you know, lots of task forces.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. That'd be good, we'll make sure, we'll make sure that we address that as, as a background for that task force.
Nice to hear, we don't have to reinvent the wheel on any of this, we're, the city's a member of the Oregon Economic Development Association, OEDA, and OEDA has a urban renewal group that, that we're also in, and that's, you know, all cities around Oregon have been doing this much longer than we, and some of their successes, how did they get their successes? Those are, those are all captured in profiles, I mean, and so we, we have, and I think to, to credit the city, we're putting this together in sixteen, I think, you know, pointing to the emphasis on the infrastructure is really key for some of the private partners, in terms of getting that, getting that waterline extended to their project or to that area, since that would benefit multiple properties and how you leverage that money, you know, there's just, there's, there's lots of tools out there. So we have that information. Does council have that information? I don't, I don't remember. Do we have any, you know?
Resources, like, resources to the city, I mean, yeah.
We had, that could be good for a conversation, or like, to get our information.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. If you guys could like send us a link or something, where you're going to, we could use that.
Absolutely.
Or we want to talk to a renewal candidate.
Okay.
Yeah.
What was it, OEDA?
OEDA.
OEDA, economic development, Oregon economic development.
Association, yeah.
And do we have a spreadsheet that summarizes all eighteen projects, the dollar amounts on a single page, or could we?
Sure, that.
I didn't know it was all being, where.
We can, we can resend you, we can resend you and give you a hard copy on Monday or something of the, of the, of the, the plan itself, it's really small. So if you want an urban renewal plan, it has all that in, in the foyer.
Summary?
Yeah, and there's, I think there's a summary sheet of all, of all the projects in the dollar amounts, but it's, it's a really thin document, we can get that for you if you'd like. Yeah, hard copy on the desk, sorry, hard copy on the desk Monday.
You got that down there?
It's like I said. But it is, or when you start, you talk about, you know, what are the projects? When you go and you dive into other urban renewal agency projects, it's pretty cool what's, what is available to you and what you can incentivize. And if we actually had some kind of review process, you looked at that, and what was successful in other areas, you might even want to make some more changes in your master plan on, on what available projects are. Because there, the, what I've seen in urban renewal agencies is, it's great to have the little grants where, you know, someone from the community developer could come in and they can get a seventy-five thousand dollar grant out for their building, facade or something like that, that's great. But that's nickel and dime, nickel and dime, it does make improvements for that individual building. The big urban renewal projects are, I think, big, big, large, and it has such a huge impact, major transportation thoroughfare, major park development, major community plaza areas, big, these are huge, that changes the scope and the, and the quality of life of a community, and that's what urban renewal can do. And you're doing that for the benefit of the community, but if you do it right, seventy-five percent of it's being paid by the private sector.
Yeah.
But it's benefiting the whole community. Those are the cool projects that, that, that are, that are just really cool, if you need some of the urban renewal projects that have been successful in other communities and stuff.
Well, we're successful here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Urban renovation apart, right?
Yes, that's, that's a great example.
It's farm land, we're getting into tax dollars, owing tax dollars.
Yeah. That's a great example there, yeah.
What are information persons, be able to take one project and promote it to everyone? Is that an idea? Is that something you would want to be promoting? Or, or maybe you might do better, I think?
We can promote, we need to promote the eighteen projects that are on the list or something along those lines. But I think really, the best impact for us to actually, instead of, like Brian said, the Kraken out there with harms everywhere, I think, doing what you're doing right now, let's focus on one that could have a huge community impact, and you're starting down that road, and the success will just seep over from there. And the excitement, because you're not only going to be talking about the, the town center plaza and urban renewal, but as soon as you're, you're linking urban renewal to it, urban renewal is going to be talked about all the time. Yeah, of course, in the context of K Man Plaza, but then also, everyone's going to be going, urban renewal, what says, oh, I can do this, this, and this, and this too. So by just focusing on that one, it's a whole fine factor on just having a discussion about urban renewal, what else can we do?
I want to put in that hotel.
A new hotel? You want to put in a new hotel?
Yeah, I want to invest my money and put in a new hotel.
That, that should be great.
So I've got a project for you, buddy.
And you know, maybe that's, maybe someday, someone that's putting in a lot of money in infrastructure in the south of the river where there is a hotel, new activities, maybe they want to put in a new hotel, and putting twenty-five percent down might, might help them build hotels.
I saw, as the city council, I'm talking as a private investor.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah.
I'm, I'm, there's this old hotel downtown, I want to put it.
Oh, oh, you want to, you're talking roster, great, well, you know what? That hotel already fits within the definition of something that could be used.
Yeah, and first of all, you guys put together the town plaza now.
Yeah.
I'm going to make that.
On the, on the downtown, the Sixth Street and Seventh Street corridors.
Yeah.
So there's, you know, there's about four million dollars right now allocated there. Was that street improvements, kind of, you know, the vision was for that to, I mean, I think that's an area that I would call lighted, if we, if we have light, you know, and just kind of improving that corridor towards downtown, the freeway would be fantastic.
If I remember this discussion, that's what it was, it was really. It was the lighting issues.
Improvements, lighting, improvements that would enhance the core of the community.
Yes. Yep. We had a big discussion about that a couple of years ago when we were expanding the urban renewal factory, and some of the discussion was also the zoning along I-5, and what's allowing those zones, and we increase or change, continue to keep it industrial, this, which might not be the best gateway to your community type of thing, but, yeah, it was all, it was all associated with the look and feel, it's people are coming into town from the north. Good discussion, more discussion on urban renewal. Any other questions?
I have a question that kind of goes back to what Sarah was talking about this time, where we talked about using some grants, what Susan's been doing, is to try to encourage some of those people to apply for grants. I mean, I know we used that other month, but at one point, I'm not sure if I can begin in, because I remember, getting something from our, our money that we have somewhere that we can use, but I imagine, but we had that, that, that logo that used to be the old CD DJ, and that's what we've utilized in our grant program, revitalized, we used it to, to light up, and then we also used it downtown, I think, and then we also used it to hand out the grants that we've been using. And we talked off and on about, well, that's, that's an extension, we can just put more money in that and continue that grant program. Is that something that we could do, or we have that right now?
If you had enough money, we could, yeah.
We have it at this point.
We still have, we still have a lot of money in there.
Is that from that?
From all the community development, a lot of grant funds, and those were some funds that we used actually to, to, for the COVID business relief that we did, and luckily, we didn't know we were going to get reimbursed on it, right, so it came back to us, so that, that rejuvenated that fund, but that, that, there's still money there. And we've used it for a couple of other things, I'm trying to think what else we used it for, I know you mentioned a couple, but so it's come down a little bit, it's not reoccurring, so.
Is that the money that we used for warrants? Is fire safety?
Yeah. Yes, yes, that's it. Yeah, those kind of grants, that's what it goes for.
I don't know how much money you had in there.
And that, that's why we had a discussion, because we know it's, it's limited resources. I think we had a discussion with council about, well, with these kind of grants, do the, how, how many grants are we going to give out, just, are, are they for property, are they for a person, or are they, you know, because you've got limited funds and, and then they'll be gone, unless we come up with some kind of registry for it.
How much money you had in that?
Uh, it's, it's at about four hundred, I think.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if Adam knows, if you have a guess, Adam, I thought it was around half a million or something like that.
A couple of years ago, it was about six hundred thousand.
It was, yeah, I know we spent some.
So can you use it also on regular, in a grant?
Oh, you could, sure.
Yeah, so, so to me, just getting back to something, Sarah, if, if that enterprise zone were funded, that, with, you know, half a hundred plaza, that would provide a potential loan, no tax payment, if that is somehow transferable with the property, or if it's able to be recreated in some way, I mean, that could be a way to essentially incentivize that project enough to get it done without taking anything out of our, you know, like, shocking to me that Travis, that was a big incentive clinic, but for somebody else, a billionaire, that twelve million might actually mean something. So, you know, to me, to, to find out exactly what the grant rates are and what the rates are, you know, that could be just a huge incentive to a whole other normal person. So, you know, to me, to, to find out exactly what the grants are and what the incentives are, you know, that could be just a huge incentive to a whole other normal person.
So, and we have that incentive right now. Any business can come in, and we have, we are, and we have an enterprise fund. So, right now, anytime a business can come in and apply for, for that tax payment dollars, uh, for five years, and they come in and, and get that based on.
So, so for that project, I was, it's actually going to be twelve and about fourteen, how was the amount decided for that budget?
It was, it, the way it's, the way that's determined is, it's determined by the, the length of the tax abatement and, you know, and amount of the original investment. So he was going to put in what, I forget how many millions of dollars of investments, and then he was guaranteeing seventy-five or two hundred fifty jobs or whatever it was. And so the salaries for the positions and the, uh, the investment in the real property, the personal property of, of the, whatever the building or whoever was needed, um, was able to be written off for ten, fifteen years or something like that. And so that's where you had that huge dollar amount.
It wasn't that big of an investment that he had to come up with. Wasn't like, uh, he didn't have to come up with fifty million dollars of investment to get his twelve million. It wasn't a very big investment, as I remember it, but we figured it out.
Yeah, I forget what it is, but part of the reason why it was such a big return is because the length of the enterprise fund was, was longer, guaranteed longer versus our enterprise fund, and most urban enterprise funds are five years. And so you as the, as the enterprise fund agency, so like you are the renewal agency, after that five-year period, the, the, the owner of the, the company, let's say it was a, let's say it was a mill, rope door or something, rope door or something, said, hey, I need a new kiln drying thing, I need this, this, and this, I'm going to be investing five million dollars. I'm going to be able to also with that, go a new shift and hire seventy-five people. So I'm investing five million dollars, plus I've got payroll, this kind of, so then, okay, what's the taxes on that five million dollar equipment that you put in? And then on, on this, the, the, the jobs are coming in, and then that is abated for five years, and after that five years, they can come in and they can ask you for an extension. And it's, you're under no obligation to extend it anymore than that, but you can for another term. So that's available to anybody right now.
I'm not personally, I know we're kind of off, off topic here, but, um, this is very interesting, I want to learn more about it, I almost think it's like, we're going to have a workshop discussion sometime, just so we can all understand it.
Yeah, you're right, it sounds like it, but.
I could ask Colleen, uh, because it's managed by So Ready, that would be great, we talked about it, yeah, and she managed it for us, she's scheduled. I don't care if we just set that up, it's So Ready.
Yeah.
Will, will that work? We had Colleen talk about the enterprise fund also. Okay.
Along those lines, it seems like it would also be interesting to just, um, learn more about what other communities have done with their, um, urban renewal agencies, like both in terms of project, you know, scope, and like, you know, kind of what it looked like at the end, but also a little bit more about how they package something to really incentivize the private.
Should we want us to like maybe do a council memo on different urban renewal projects that had private investments associated with them?
I don't, I don't know if it needs to be a memo, I think the information that Brad offered up from, I forget.
O E, O E E A.
If you could just send us like links to stuff that already exists, I don't know that you guys can even write anything about it, but the information is fairly accessible to us.
Yeah.
It's back to the mayor's suggestion, that we can make our workshops more efficient, and, 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 and make our individual homes.
I mean, maybe there's a video or something, I don't know if there's a webinar about something like this, but just, you know, I was like, the visuals a little bit more than reading through a memo, just watching a little video or something.
I don't know, I think, but they'll do something huge in there where you can see something, I mean, as you agree with, you know, they'll talk about successes and they'll also have visual features. So I think, to me personally, I'd rather be given a place to go to come up with questions, because I, you know, I know you can do it, but to me, that takes a lot of your time, and we can do our whole research and then come back and, and have questions. But I, I, it's like, I don't know what questions to ask until I've seen something, and then I have questions.
Then, then, I think O E E A has reports on successful urban renewal agencies' projects, so they've got like a, a PDF downloadable version that you can just take a look at. So we'll send them that PDF, I think I've seen that you probably find something like that. Okay, uh, do we need to write that down in the part mod, or are you?
No, I'll get it out.
Okay, cool.
Anyway, I think you can talk to So Ready and to Colleen about doing a presentation when she comes.
Yep, she's going to, and we're going to add enterprise fund to her presentation.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, and people want to take a quick break before we go to council objectives, or would you like to just jump in?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, sounds good. So this is the, I'm going to go through comments that were received by council. And so this is your opportunity, if you want to champion something, or you have questions about it, then make sure to let us know as we move through these. Under enhanced community safety, number one, support mental health and eviction services. This is a council and a public one that was proposed. Expand the downtown satellite police station and work with O D I in the county to build more capacity on Highway one ninety-nine from Tuxedo Lane to Dowell Road.
So I wrote that number three, isn't that, that, that's phase, that's phase three of that big plan, isn't it?
And it's being revisited because it was dumped years ago, because the county and city did not, the county and forgot, did not get the law, and so they kind of dumped it, and now it kind of went back to the tail, you know, they're trying to, you know, it is without you. So there is something right now, it's a process. So I don't know whether it's worth thought, because I think it's happening, I, I just think, I was looking at it there, because I just, you know, I just feel so distraught with that, especially with this infrastructure money coming down. You know, we really need to stay on top of that, and not, as Jason knows, it's me going in and cracking the whip and saying, have this together, have this together, let's work together on this, but I don't know if that's really something that's, you know, I don't.
Well, it is a clutch project, but, I mean, is that something that, that there's merit to having the city council show splitters more?
Um, I actually think that there is. Uh, the reason being, again, this is our tool, this is what we have as our public document, and it is your highest priorities, right? And then so if you can look at the strategic plan and your highest priority, and you go to O D I and say, look, council said, this is important as a group, and that's, that's what that tool is. So from that perspective, yes. Are we going to slow down or stop working on this task? No.
It shouldn't be a high priority, I agree with that.
But it, it should be a high priority, because this is, as you all know, South Wyatt is our, it's just a mess.
Yeah.
And it's going to keep getting worse.
And I think that's a really good point, again, to frame the mindset is, this is a guiding document, this is a guiding document for, for the public on what your priorities are, what's important to you, and it's a, it's a guiding document for the budget, it's a guiding document for staff. It truly is a guiding document, and maybe it's something that is sort of, sort of going, but, but sometimes having that as, hey, this is important to us. You are, and, and if this is really important, then it, it is something that you should be telling the public, it's important.
Yeah, and I do know, and I would agree with that, and I, I kind of tried to downplay it just because I know that, you know, but I, I agree for the public to see, yes, we recognize this as an achievement, especially since that, right there, you're talking, you're around that whole area out there. It's a mess, it's a mess. I mean, anybody who travels over there, they do not want to be anywhere near that part of town. I mean, we all know that and recognize it, that that is a major bottleneck, um, in our community.
I drive it every day, and it gets way better if I leave work late, and if I start to leave on time. And it's just, I might as well stay and be more productive for half an hour in Bridge City to do that traffic.
It's that way in the afternoon, and it starts that way early, it's hostile out there. I mean, you've got the hospital, you've got the, that's a sense.
I've never seen it. And we all, we've all seen it, back all the way up to City Hall.
Oh, yeah.
All the way back.
It's horrible.
Yeah. Anyway.
So anyway, so thank you for that, that's your advice. That is, that is, I think, one of our main features.
So moving to enhance, continuing on enhanced community safety, number four, five, four through eight, actively promote and increase neighborhood watch program. Support the creation of an extreme weather center. Explore the concept of an independent fire department. Remodel Little Crest Station Phase One, and explore Tesla patrol car pilot program.
Can I ask the chief, um, if the status of the neighborhood watch, I know we used to have it, I know we might still have it, if you give the status of what, where it is?
If communities want neighborhood watch programs, we will support them. We are not actively going around asking, uh, neighborhooders, do they want a community watch program within their region? The, uh, crime prevention, or just, yeah, the prevention police officer position, regardless of last year, and, um, part of the, our holistic approach to ambassadors within the community. We will do it no matter what, even with short-staffed, it'll happen. But we're not engaged, uh, with communities to make that happen. We wait for them to reach out to us.
So a good example would be, uh, we had, when I had, you know, kids in the house, a meth dealer next door that was selling meth, manufacturing meth next door to us. And, uh, I called the police and said, hey, do you want, first off, I went around all the neighbors, and they said, yeah, we need to do something. I said, then, uh, the police was talking to her right in front of that house, and we met underneath the open kitchen window, where, uh, where the dealer, everything that was going on about the, the neighbors reported. I displayed emergency, those kind of things, the police was very helpful, kind of got me. So, yeah, but, but, as long as we, you know, we're continuing to respond to what's happening.
That exact, um, scenario happens unfortunately far too often. Do you always do that? Uh, that's very commonplace, policing everywhere. You know, neighborhood watch programs are very specific. Setting up a program, possibly like, like, eating, patrols, signage, stickers on cars, all that kind of thing. That's more of an outreach piece that we don't have the bandwidth technically to do, uh, but because I've asked my teams to be that ambassador. If there is a community out there, like the Bottle Drop for example, uh, and Tom and I, we've talked about this, they're frustrated with a lot of issues over there. Uh, because it's seeing a lot of, um, um, residual movement or additional movement into those communities from the Bottle Drop. Uh, so they may be considering something like that, and we're happy to have that, maybe it's a community meeting with them recently as well. So it'll always be available, the outreach piece of the mountain.
I want to champion a couple of the.
Sure.
First one is remodel Little Crest Station Phase One. I know a lot of councils are interested in that site and seeing how, um, shabby it is. Uh, you know, living quarters, bathrooms, kitchen, uh, our backup dispatch center. I think we have a little bit of money earmarked for that, and I know that, um, the way we talked about it before was part of a bigger project where we were going to have CCS come in and do this big thing, where it was going to cost at least a couple of million dollars. I think what I was looking for with this is something a little bit more, I swear, we're making the conditions better for firefighters in the station. We're just taking care of living quarters, we're taking care of bathrooms, we're taking care of the kitchen, we're getting that backup dispatch center operational. And then if we want to do a bigger thing later, um, that would be great, but I don't know that that's what they're dealing with right now. I would like to see something out there. So I can certainly support that. It's, uh, it might be able to run down a frat house. It does, and, um, the problem that I have with that is deferred maintenance, you know, we're experiencing a lot of leveraging our resources because of deferred maintenance, and that is, in my opinion, a primary example of deferred maintenance. You know, what is there over the last ten years, we've spent millions of dollars on, uh, divergent issues, water lines, et cetera, parking lot. With that, with that public safety station being driven over ten years, we're spending a couple of million dollars because we've ignored it, that's only just going to, and continue to increase. So there's something to consider.
Is that part of the asset management? I mean, is that part of the program that we're working on right now, where they're prioritizing them? So would that come out as, I would imagine, one of the top asset things we're going to take, we'll get what we need to do, I mean, just.
I can't answer where it will fall on the list of, um, priorities. It will be on the list, we, it's one of the facilities, we've done every facility in the city, and as I said, will be in front of you. I'm thinking it's March.
Our team, our unit's super hot, because it affects employee, uh, morale and retention of our department, which we already have issues with, so if we can, you know, knock that out, just make it better for that staff, I think we'll go a long way.
So I want to, I want to see if I can have the, 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 the chief or Randy address that, because I want to make sure that if you're going to prioritize, if you're, if that's going to be a priority, I want to make sure the expectations are clear on what that would mean. So if that was, say, one of the top five, what does that look like, and is it something that we can just sort of knock out in, in a cheap, in, in expensive ways, instead of doing the full-blown, like what we're talking about? Because it is a little shabby, and not shabby chic, but a little shabby though, so, okay, so if I can have you guys, just so we're on the same page.
Just a quick, I don't know, this is Randy's house, I'll let him chat about it, um, but the one thing is, I heard, I heard, just to make sure everybody knows. The nine-one-one backup piece app is one hundred percent functional. In fact, we, uh, have that as a backup plan in case we have the COVID positives in dispatch, we might have to just withdraw the positive people at the backup piece app working together to get through the emergency. Uh, so that's one hundred percent working, so don't, do not worry about that. Doesn't bug me, somebody smells kind of funky, and there is a quote out about it, but it's working. Um, when we took the C C S engineering council, uh, we still have to do that no matter what we do. And that's, uh, spending price tag, I think, was several billion, ninety thousand a month. Uh, so right off the bat, we have to do that engineering piece with them. And then to do a phased approach, um, my recollection is, if we do it in bits and pieces, it's going to cost a lot more than just putting several million dollars to it to make it happen. But we can certainly look at it, and, but it's not it. I don't think it's a knockout kind of thing, and we were in the military, we did a draft team to carpet, we were just going to make it happen. Uh, it's not a.
Chief, I got to ask, because if we're remodeling living quarters, we don't need an engineer to have, we're remodeling a bathroom, we don't need an engineer to have. If we're remodeling a kitchen, we don't need CCS to drop a seventy thousand dollar plan for engineering for, for what, what I'm considering like a remodel, like, you know, so there's like a level, maybe the level you're talking about is the level different than what I'm talking about, but I don't think, I am seeking, please, we need to spend seventy thousand dollars for CCS to engineer it.
There's kind of, kind of a, crowding the line to increase maintenance versus take care of deferred maintenance. So this is just increased maintenance, can you, can you do increased maintenance to be there?
You know, and I, I'm going to give this to Randy, because I know that might have a lot of morality as well, but if, if we want to, you know, carpet, tile, paint, new countertops, can that happen? I would say absolutely, but I would have to defer to the experts and I'll look across Jason, uh, from, from an engineering standpoint. Are we wasting our money or not? Is it better off to save and, and, and put money into an L V project from there down the road? Um, to make that happen, maybe, but I think it's a more, it's more, it's a bigger discussion. Um, I, I think, um, and, and I also, I, Brad can jump in here anytime, because I know the facts, right? If we keep them a pain first, it might be kind of.
Now, I don't give you the discovery report back for water analysis up there. And one of the issues that we don't even do, we need to let, we're not allowed to iron the pipes. And there's a tremendous amount of iron filtered, pipes that are coming through, uh, so the water analysis came back to, he estimated what the recommendation should be, there's point three. We're currently at four point five. So anytime you go up there and drain the pipes, you are getting that iron coming out. There's a lot of debate. What does that mean? Is that a threat for people? Um, I've been going on, look at the articles, there's some that says, oh, there's no big deal with it, and there's others that's actually saying, yes, there are some health issues. Um, from not only just showering with it, it's due to drinking as well. We've got two places up there that are filtered, uh, the kitchen area is filtered, this has been a known issue, but it seems to be increasingly getting worse to the point where sometime last year or two, you know, Jane, that's the person that's taking care of our facilities, they had some of the faucets just kind of stopped. You know, Jane, that's the person who's taking care of our facilities, they had some of the faucets just kind of stopped. And so they went in there to figure out why it hasn't stopped. And it was that the pipe was completely flooded with iron into the bathroom itself. So I think when you start looking at, you've got those issues, that's a much deeper dive into the infrastructure itself of replacing those pipes and how we're going to get that done. Then you've got just the total, that station was built in the seventies. In the seventies, there wasn't really a concept of fire, you mean EMS. That was the new thing. So now moving forward to EMS and new stations where we've got decom rooms, we've got separate living facilities. And now to Omicron. Omicron has definitely affected that station, we've got all of our others. Because the other setup, there's our living facilities that can go in and isolate folks. We were able to move workstations out of normal office into the rooms, which allowed the folks to get out of the masks, not being, you know, so much. And there is exposure risk for folks, which is huge. And then you've got Hillcrest, where currently at the moment, we shut the entire training room down. We do that spot, or the next two weeks, we can't have anybody in there meeting, you know, outside people coming in or using that room. And the reason is that we've got different recommendations, different guidelines that we follow for Omicron exposures in the rest of the world. I'm at a seven to day minimum of anybody that gets a significant exposure that they're out of work during that time period. Up to ten, depending on if they can test negative before they come back. You know, and again, that reasoning is hard to go in on our medical policy. We go on at-risk population. So we're going on COVID positive because the world's going on at-risk people that we don't want to promote, you know, give it to. So there's, looking at that facility itself, just going here and updating and saying, we haven't known what Omicron's like in our world, the fire EMS. It's not the first type of thing that we've had come out as far as. It's the most significant pandemic that AIDS came out in the eighties. You've had some other different variants here and there, TB, meningitis, those are all these things that we're dealing with exposure risks. So we could go through and update those areas and it would be in improvement form. But I think when you're actually looking at the facility itself, is we're really needing to be revamping that facility, including space structure. Look at putting an outside training room that's isolated so that SWAT can come in there and there's no significant risk of us building them and exposing us. And then utilizing some of that training room space or increased office space for us. And possibly even some of the bedrooms, depending on how it's redesigned. Adding in the chief position for us, one of the things down the parkway, we've taken those briefing rooms and turned it into a deputy chief's office. As kind of a temporary place to build, because we don't really have another place to extend into. And so again, looking at Hillcrest or their future growth, would be a great place for us to either figure out is that the fire happens, gonna go, is that where the prevention folks are gonna go? But utilize that space to build that for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I think based on what you guys just said, I would just maybe like to tweet this to say remodel Hillcrest Station study. To have that, to get that.
And if, if I may say that in one thing, and I recall prior to leaving the fire department, that is, I'm sorry. I really enjoy getting out, meeting, talking, chatting, managing, like, you know, traveling around the station. I think I recall the guy saying something similar to, we'd rather you not do anything that he said remodel. I think I remember him saying that too, so.
You know, I'd like to add a little bit more. I feel in building real estate, as everybody knows, it's more than what you receive. I believe, I know you understand that, you know, the analysis of those water pipes.
You can't go back from that.
You're talking about completely redoing your water infrastructure. You can imagine that there's more in there. And I believe in twenty nineteen, councilors were planning allocated a hundred fifty thousand dollars?
One seventy-five.
One seventy-five to, to Hillcrest. With the understanding that it's gonna take evaluation. It's my opinion that that seventy, ninety thousand dollars to get a thorough evaluation of the building. I think regardless of what action that we decide to take in the end, it's worth that investment. Because we all know this thing. And so the best thing to do in those circumstances is unfortunately to entertain a space there. Because we don't know. And who knows, maybe the engineer might come back and say, look, you guys are actually in there, it could be not, and it would be less expensive. My opinion, going through that building is probably not going to be. But at the very least, it's worth investigating, spending that money, investing into understanding the state of that building. Thoroughly taking guesswork out of it. So we, we actually know, okay. I think we really need to pursue. So.
Changing that to.
So can we just change it to Hillcrest Station Study then?
Yeah.
Everyone okay with that?
And there are other money, it's already, it's already been a quick shift away of that money and there's only fifty thousand.
Oh, okay.
So we might have to go a little bit longer.
But the understanding that, I mean, that what you're saying is, you know, for the fire department is that if, if that building doesn't get improved on for five, ten, twenty years or whatever, as, you know, that, that you don't want any cosmetic improvements. You know, I mean, because I think that's what the ask is to do, you know, to make life work more bearable, you know, in the immediate future here, because it might take a real long time, no one, what future councils are gonna do or anything.
Well, that's the thing, it's, 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 it's actually the point we're bringing up. We give it a phase of, we put a bed aid on it. We do an evaluation, let's say we spend a couple million dollars on, on, which is, you know.
That was maybe a lot more than what I was thinking.
And then, and then, and then we do the evaluation and it says, oh man, you guys are in a mess. We have to peel off that thirty thousand dollar, three hundred thousand dollar bed aid and promote it. And then you add up on the potential for maintenance and it's, we're just gonna continue to.
I, I think that if this came out as one of your priorities, pre-star, two-star, whatever. I think that that would go a long ways in, in sending a message to fire that you're supportive, especially now that they're more independent. And they would see this as a win. I really think that they would see this as a win, but.
So, and I think one of the things that's part of laying before he left, one of the things we did is reach out to CCS and request what the cost would be for us to go in and do that. And based on information that from the council, not only phased in study, but doing it. Getting the things done that needs to be done so long-term, we're not doing it. We're actually getting money into it and having to take it down a little bit, remodel later. And so they did get us that, and I believe that it was ninety-seven thousand, if you overlook that.
One more thing I wanna add. During the discussion and then the ultimate decision to not pursue the engineer's analysis. It was brought up that we should put out an R P to give other people over this price. That was brought up, and I wanted to remind everybody that CCS has worked on that building, you're familiar with it. You know, in this area to continuing with the same organization that we're, you know, more so than some of these coming along.
I don't mean to discuss this thoroughly right now, but, you know, when you look at that building. I would have to say that I liked that building a bit easier than most. You've got all service, all electronics, it's basically a big open box. See what's been done, you can see what's been done, so there are any more things in there, there's stages. And this year, this was done, and it's all right there, where anybody can sit, nothing is hidden. I, I'd be shocked to have an R P that anyone can get somebody who's very qualified to go ahead and figure it out, and they go off for all that money. But they've been there, sure, but they, they're a favored contractor for this thing for some reason. But that, it's, that's probably the way they're going to, they're trying to.
So I think, Brian, you mentioned that you had a couple you wanted to champion, or is there another one that I, sorry, I caught you in your ear.
It's okay. The other one's the Explorer Tesla Patrol Car Pilot Program. That would be specifically for police. There are other communities in the country that have already done this, and their product programs have been successful. So it's not necessarily reinventing the wheel. And it's an opportunity for us to try it out. And if it's successful, you know, as we replace vehicles in the fleet. I don't ever see us, not in all Teslas, but unfortunately would save us a lot of money on fuel, a lot of money on maintenance. And also go a long way towards setting examples for the community itself. Can you, could you speak to that a little bit? Have you looked at the piece about how much it is?
You know, I, I haven't, but I've read our, I, I've seen articles, looked through articles, chatted with some of the guys. The urban drives with pilot testing, I believe, for sure. What the manager and me says, things like, some of these pilot car programs are in affluent communities in the Bay Area, for example. And they're not in the same kind of, let's say, pursuit type activity that we're in here. If you see any big bumpers on our cars, it's because we have a lot of pursuit mobilization techniques that we use quite often. And when we dig up a Chevy, it's okay. I wonder how much it costs to dig up a Tesla, because I'm not sure on that side of it. Those, I have heard they've been successful. I, I'm a little bit more concerned about affordability day to day, like, how does your M V T, you know? How do I mount my rifle? How do I mount my shotgun? How do I mount my Leslie shotgun? Some of the men and women are, are a little bitter. How do we fit in said vehicle? Is there a Tesla four by four, all-wheel-drive big car? I don't know. I think it would be fun to look at.
Make for the truck.
Well, um.
I'm sorry, that's you, Pete. I think they've done a good job with the older class.
My question, but this is, can we just create a, 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 is that kind of what they're gonna do? I mean, I just kind of figured that it would be one of the tasks that they would play on, that. So that was, that's my thought, is that we've kind of done that, that's what I expect them to back with us, with, to us, with their recommendations and how best we can pump that. So.
Is that gonna be environmental, that's what I'm, it's not gonna be environmental.
Yeah, environmental task force that both would get, that we're building right now, for us, because we have that thinking set up. So I think that's something that we would have, I think, more meeting, we're gonna come down. And that's just like, oh.
When I, when I see, when I see a Tesla vehicle, I worry about preparedness, and it's a charge, it's not a charge. And, you know, over time, I think I've heard or read it all model, or maybe it's cost, over a period of time, you can save money, so people. So it's hard to.
It's hard.
But the parts and pieces for one vehicle, a patrol car, we would be back up it. I would just maybe consider looking at another area within the city if we want to explore electric vehicles. But I'm, I'm happy to do whatever, I'm, I'm happy, it can be a whole project, but I know it might be some difficult side angle.
You're gonna test it for us?
You don't wanna know my opinion on Tesla. I've never bought a Tesla personally. Because I'm the people, he's the less stuff, randomly, not me.
It's okay, you said, you said. I'm not gonna down my score over this year, but I have to, I can plant this seed and then we just have this discussion.
Okay, alright. Any other champions for any of these four items up here? Five items. Moving to new goal, provide proper shared leadership. Number one, number five, community engagement outreach to multiple sectors with multiple outreach tools. Develop new maps, art block, historic blocks, downtown residential maps, walking, biking maps. Permanent fix to email spam holder in order to benefit communication public. Study foot hill, landfill for make a watch solar installation project. And propose bond levy for social services on the ballot. Now, I'll just jump in before you make comments. We, um. The number three, we're still working on, and I'll have a report for you next week on, on the option from a risk standpoint, what council would like to do with individuals to take on additional risk. So that is being addressed to some degree. Okay, so yeah, I got the information yesterday, so I haven't had a chance to read it yet.
Okay, I answered the question on that one, because I need to go into my spam holder and pull up what needs to be brought up, based on what they, the directions that they gave us. And I don't know whether that refers to not doing that or doing that and having the same people who back up each other. That's my question.
I, I do too. I have to do it at work. What you're doing, we have to do. And I'll get, I'll get from John Smith, who is a, you know, whoever that I talk to all the time. I'll still get John Smith in my spam holder because of a link he sent me or because of something that was in the document. He's been whitelisted. He is, I've told, I've told Barracuda that he's totally good. But based on the content of the email, they still sometimes get spam trampled in my spam all the time.
But then again, we have Mike Alfred that makes it through one hundred percent.
He, he doesn't actually, you know, they go by half the time.
Oh.
Yeah, and I couldn't tell. I didn't.
I don't use Siri.
Yes, I didn't see that.
And I go into mayor council and clear things. I don't clear his anymore if they get stuck. I mean, I get half of them are getting stuck.
Get half.
But, well, I mean, a significant amount, yeah.
I'm amazed more of them get stuck than go through. You go, because I go and do it like all the time.
Yeah, he does seem a lot of the time.
He's amazing, even teenager or whatever, I mean, they just, they just fill that up amazingly fast. And he's like, well, how did those three get through? And those six didn't.
Well, then sometimes, like you said, I mean, in this thin conversation, you know, you'll, we have like chatting back and forth with somebody and all of a sudden, you know, you don't hear from them, right? And then you check the spam and, and they're, if like a second spam, I mean, it's, it is kind of ridiculous, I guess, in that sense, but. But yeah, I am able to check spam.
I mean, and I do it a lot. I was telling you, I do it a lot because of what she said.
Well, you do, yeah. It's like, when I check my email, that's a habit that, you know, at least once a week, I'm having to check the spam also. Because that's just what you have to do to keep the system safe.
And then on the other side, I get messages from Sarah asking me to call her.
And buy Amazon gift cards.
I can assure all of you, I, I, yeah, I actually use this as an email pretty frequently because I don't have it on my phone and.
It says like, Joel, I need something for you. Please call me or please email me immediately.
If I wanna call you, I will call you to ask you to help me, so that's all, Joel.
I think there's a general target for that. We experience that.
So is anyone championing any of the items up there?
Yeah, so I didn't propose much this year, but five is something that I brought to the table and I talked most to you, Sarah was able to leave, Brian was able to leave. I talked to everybody else, for our council vice chair and your group as well. The reason I brought this up is because we are facing a critical issue in this community regarding social services. We have been very reactive in our policy regarding social services. That's, the warming center is a good example, nobody's doing it, we're gonna do it. We're spending money, we're spending resources, and we are basically just shotgunning this approach. The purpose behind this is to instigate a critical thought process and discussion about formulating a plan. First and foremost, what is the role and responsibility of the level of government regarding social services in this community? And this proposal is at the core of, is that this council and our constituents believe that it is the governing body's responsibility to be a primary tracker behind social services in this community. We need a revenue source and we need a plan of action to respond to that. And if we also, on the other side, decide that it is this, this governing body's responsibility to be that. Then we need the, we need the okay from our constituents. The goal behind this is to have a discussion about that. What is our role? What is our responsibility? We need to understand that and we need to create a plan. We have to have a plan to entertain those circumstances of regarding the houses population and the less fortunate in this community and what do we as a council person do about it? Do I think that we are at the point of. Do I think that we are at the point of proposing a bond levy to our constituents at this juncture? Not necessarily. That is kind of a, an endgame if we decide that we are going to be the fundamental party in social services in this community. So talking about this, expanding this into, okay, what is our role and responsibility and what can we do as a unified body regarding social services in this community? I'm spending a lot of time and resources talking about this, being very reactive to the circumstances. And we need to have a clearly defined plan about what we do. What is storming? Uh, what do we do aside from, okay, we're pursuing an urban campground, which is great. That's, that's, that's aside from this. We've already gone down that direction, we're already allocating money and we're ready to do that. We need to have a plan. We can't be, we can't be shotgunning this approach anymore. So just to get more specific details out of this idea, what do you need my social services like what? It would be, uh, that's a, that's a great thing. So that's a great question. So the idea for if we were to go, we can go out, I'll start here. It would be something along the lines of garnering resources over a certain term, time, three, five years that's non-recurring. Um, that we can get a lump sum of money and then some money could go to things that my social services, I mean, mental health and rehabilitation. We can allocate these resources to social county health. They can increase their labor force to specifically address the issue in the city. We can subsidize, uh, use that money to subsidize road retreat or U can for their endeavors, right? To become effective as they have been in that for personal. I'm not proposing that we create a department within the city, hire specialists on our payroll to be responding to this. It would be a supplementary idea to, to, to allocate to those nonprofits to take a larger role of facilitating the response to the, the housing crisis here. Okay. The thought I had was that you're sure that the community's gonna be successful, like Portland, mainly larger cities, uh, where there's a larger constituency. It's important. Um, Portland, that, that's one, I think, Los Angeles, San Francisco, uh, not where many other cities go. The other thing I was, I was thinking of, you know, in terms of what we would fund, if they can't fund permanent positions connected to cases into the same situation we have with the police, but like, um, um, you know, having somebody with mental health options as the grant right around with the police boards where they're dating people like we've been this morning. Uh, so that there's an issue there that, uh, the police have that resource, which would be a good thing. Our employees, uh, you know, don't have to deal with it. We've got a professional there to deal with it. Uh, and, and it works. Um, or, and with the, uh, like warming shelter or the, uh, um, uh, urban campground. You know, when I was in our temporary warming shelter, June, I went the next day and she's, she's such blessed, she's a great resource, I mean, she should be or something. She's, you know, medically and spiritually and all, and all over, man, like, there was this guy sleeping up with heroin in the morning, right? That's a, right, and, 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 and we, we didn't have really any, any professional there to, uh, we, we turned the guy out and it was, it was 25 communities. That was our solution and, you know, we're hanging around high school. Um, and that, that didn't feel good. Uh, yeah, that's not what we're about to begin with, uh, and I think we can do better than that. But I understand what I think you did. That disappointing time. At some, some degree or other, I committed to the idea of talking money for, or a campground. But for now, today, I mean, I need, I need more meetings. We're gonna need to do it. We're, we're kind of committed to that. Um, but as we move forward, much beyond that, we're gonna continue with future years to chump here and chump there and echo and die, whatever. And think you're saying that we need to actually official, uh, declaration that's what we're gonna do. And we should take it out to the public and say, do you want us to continue these services, continue helping this way? Yes or no? We, you know, we got this chunk of money here, we're gonna set up road retreat, okay, that way. Now at this point, what is our role? We follow that. So I think you're saying we're gonna do this year after year after year. Then we need to be clear now and make that decision that we're gonna ask the public whether or not we're gonna continue to do this for future years. Yeah, basically, yes, it's correct because we can, we can entertain that if we do create a plan, codify plans, this is how we're going to react to the different circumstances. It's gonna cost money. Okay, and, you know, we can, we can get money from all kinds of different sources, as we all know. Um, but it really goes down to those of the taxpayers' money thing. If, if, at the core goes to the roles and responsibilities of the governing body. We're currently not dictated by the charter to be the social service organization or this taxpayer's money. We do have a very important role in this task, being the facilitator. We have very important pieces. We have other villages for every example. We took the role of the governing body, we created a, a, out there. And we, we knocked down some hurdles, we allowed that to happen. And if it wasn't for the guys doing that, that would not have been impossible project for the communities. That's what I believe our roles and responsibilities are. And based on where this council board decides to lie on that spectrum of responsibility, there is a threshold that can be passed that goes past what we are duty bound to do based on our target. And if we surpass that threshold and we start, um, officially spending these resources to, we want to go and pursue and solve any issues that we have in this community. We will eventually have to have our constituents telling us that that is our task to do so. And a bond levy for getting those resources is a definitive way to ask the constituents, this is what they believe our task to be. That is currently not anything below, that anything past that hypothetical threshold is not our duty to do. For example, I think that the warming shelter, that was beyond our task to spend resources and have a city manager be the, the, the employee, the driver, the facilitator behind the warming shelter. That's that's beyond threshold. Okay, I'm not arguing the, the need for that service, right? We all know that nobody stepped up to play. We got warming shelter there. We all know that. We felt compelled to do so. But regardless, I think that that's beyond task. That's beyond our duty. And I think that that was part of reactionary politics and not having a safety plan and understanding of our roles and responsibilities are. So I appreciate you making outside of the box on this. Start with that. Um. But the way you explained what this will fund. Um. Options, uh, public health, uh, you know, similar organizations. When they came and spoke to us last year, I didn't hear a need for funding resources from them. I heard a need, uh, for stamping. They, they didn't have any problem within the money area. They had a problem in the getting bodies area. Um. So from that perspective, I don't particularly see a need for us to send something to the voters to get more money to the rest side. I think the money is already there. Um. I mean, I'll keep it brief because, you know, we've got a lot to go through here, but that's the thing, sending this to the voters is just really bad, I think. Um, I think we should reserve bonds and levies for public safety, for things that are, you know, we don't wanna be going out, we don't wanna go out for K and M pool. You know, we don't wanna ask the, the liftman for K and M pool. We don't wanna be going out. We don't wanna go to the wells often. Um, and I don't feel like, I feel like the resources are in there for, for the piece they're talking about. Sure. No, I'm gonna agree with you in some, in some regards. This is a terrible idea. Because I don't want, because I don't, I don't want to be that. This, I do not feel duty bound to be the one that said garners taxpayers' money, being the driving force behind facilitating social services in this community. I don't see that as my duty. Right. But going back to what I said, that if it is determined by this council that that is our responsibility, we need to, we need a funding resource and we, we basically, the, the, the permission from our constituents to do so. Right, and the purpose of proposing this was to start a critical thought process on creating a plan that helps us understand what our roles and responsibilities are. Because we can't, we can't any longer be acting in the way that we have, which is very reactionary. Right, we don't know, we don't, we don't have to think that we have a unified understanding of our roles and responsibilities are. And the proof is because we've been so reactionary. We spent a lot of time talking about what we're going to do about this crisis, and it is a crisis. Right, what can we do as a council board to do what our role is in this continuum of service? And have that plan enacted accordingly. Does that make sense? And anybody that has any input in regards to, uh, expanding this into a different idea that we can all get behind, that needs support. Um, let's, let's talk about it.
Yeah, I would, I would disagree that we do not need to ask voters to, if you want to move in this direction, if we, if you read the art of this survey, that's like 30 page survey that's get back to it, almost back, you know, something about back to what we're going to do. So I think that that was, that was pretty straightforward for the community. It, it even sounds like we might shift this into one of the community suggestions of developing a community health action plan that does steer us in that direction of critically thinking and understanding, kind of approach of how we move forward from here. Um, and you did mention, um, figuring out like what to do when it's storming, and I know that we're gonna be developing a severe weather response plan, so maybe this would be a bit higher to kind of champion a point from the previous slide of supporting the creation of an extreme weather center. Very similar to what the city's entered that they don't facilitate it, they don't operate it, but they support the creation. Um, so maybe even have a role there within the community on action plan might be a little bit of a problem. I think supporting this before having a plan is very much like the discussion that we had yesterday with the tree committee of how to dedicate the funding before having a management plan, we can have a park for more compassion.
I agree.
So I think that maybe we should shift into the action.
Sure, sure. No, I agree. I, I'm, I, I have no intention of putting any dots on this unless everybody on this council said, yes, we want to be a social service organization. Then that's how we, that's how we have to do it, in my opinion. And you're correct, we did send out a statistically, an inquiry, a retirement fund that said this money should be spent on social services, right, it's allowable use. That doesn't necessarily say to me that constituents want us to generally be that organization that spends money outside of that, you know, one-time funding source for social services. But to me, that's a fundamentally difference. This is a, this is a totally different ask than what that survey told us. Does that make sense? So I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to connect those two. I'm saying that it's being mutually exclusive.
I see, I see. The way that I look at it is that it's the community sentiment of just this is the biggest issue that we are concerned about. Please do help us out.
Sure. No, and I agree with that. Absolutely agree with that. What I'm really trying to do here is define our roles and responsibilities, what role we play in these crises. And we need to act accordingly. We need to plan. We need an action. We need an understanding of what that role is. And we need to, we, we need to stick to it. And we need, you know, it's fortunate that we can't do everything. We all know that. You sent us a great document that spells out what our roles are as, as a city government, for the legal, we're in cities. It, it takes everybody, who are your partners? What is your role? We need to understand that. And we, and we need to have a plan that's, that's likely to, to that touch. There's a lot of good information in there.
So it sounds like almost what you're wanting to do is, is define cities' roles with regards to mental health, drug addiction, and homeless.
Yes, that's what we want. And this, this terrible idea was, was, was part of, uh, strategically implementing something that's going to spark this conversation. Braving the, braving the importance of it. That's what we'll have to do if, if we want to be a larger proportion of solving this crisis. So, so I think what, I just have to, uh, get this one point in. You, uh, keep using the word reactionary, it's almost like, uh, one of my words that I would miss to say is there's time to move and act react. You know, I mean, that's just a sample, let's say, a sample of us reacting to things that they've come up. But, so that's on the side that, that reactionary. But, um, I think what you're saying is on this point forward, if, if we decide to continue essentially leading by these, these, the, the things, we will, you know, we can point back to, back to this day and this, these, this room and say, look, we all decided that we weren't gonna move forward and come up with a source for this money, so we, we need to be responsible. We could, we decided, you know, in January, 27th, that's what it is, that we weren't gonna see digital bonds. That we had a decision, we got a limited amount of money. And now we gotta stick to what our, you know, we kind of decided today, we're not gonna see funds from voters in that sense. So we got a plan. And we're kind of, this is a vital point, it's very important. Yeah, so that, that, that really does describe it, I'm trying to do here.
And I think going back to what, um, um, Mesa said, we did get a clear, um, when we surveyed, but we were surveyed for our budget. We weren't surveyed for operating moving forward. So to me, what I feel comfortable with is, yes, we need to work to get a piece of property to get something started. Oh, we have people out there that are working and that, I feel very comfortable with that. I mean, that to me is, I really do feel you can, um, road retreat. I mean, they're, they're, they're blessed to have guys waiting on the bridges to jump in and do that because they are being and they, but the community has been there. And they have remained dedicated to getting it moved. And so I think that's it. We need to recognize the difference between the art of survey and the operating plan. And to me, that is what I'm hearing is that in a state, we only want to go out and pour off the expenses and asking and putting money there because what we recognize that our community sees this homelessness as something that we got this gift of money. What can you do to help them move forward? And so that's why I'd say we have to think, yes, our budget says yes. But operating is a whole different issue and there are other organizations out there that are just talking with us about options. They'll tell you, there's money out there right now. They don't have staff. So it doesn't matter how much money you go with a problem right now. We don't have staff and you're not going anywhere. And that is what the message that I'm hearing from our community and options people out there is that money's not there.
Yeah, so. What do you have to comment on?
What, what do you get? We need, we need to move on.
No, I was, I was, I was trying to answer this and, and, and so we created, there's been, there's been a second now about this all day. We need to, we need to realize where we've gotten from January last year here before. We've done things that are relatively innocuous, like, uh, expanding county cars in the park to crossing the threshold and being the, the primary organization behind the warming shelters. For two examples of opposite sides of the spectrum, one is within our authority and the other one is going way outside of our task. And the plan, in, in, in the warming shelter was regardless of, you can basically say, double to it. We need to have a plan. I'm willing to take this, take this off, of course. Nobody's gonna support this and I'm not surprised by that. But I think it's very important that, at the very least on the part we want, that we have resolved to talk about is what are our roles and responsibilities? Let's define it for ourselves and let's define it for our, for our constituents. This is the role that we are determined to play in this continuum. Let's establish what our role is and then encourage the establishment of what is the role of all the other community players? And that is taking a step forward into, okay, this is our real estate. Where's everybody else's? How can we work together? So I'd like to park a lot of this items, I didn't, and, and have resolution to, to talk about this.
I think there's probably enough, there was enough conversation today that there probably is a justification to parking lot that. So will parking lot determine, determine roles? Determine council roles with mental health drug addiction, uh, mental health drug addiction and, and health.
Health and, and we can just, that was, the purpose of this is to have this, a, a discussion that we've had.
Okay. Can we champion on any other topics? Yes, you know, I, I always ask at one time. Let me make sure, let me make sure that Karen has it, that parking lot written down. Well, let's see here. Parking lot, people in mental health, drug addiction, unhoused, social services. Don't take another bite, Ryan. Because now we're going to go to, does anyone want to champion something else?
Very briefly, I want to champion number two, the development of the map. This comes from multiple committees. COVO would like our walk map. HSBC would like historic walk maps with the on tap version, and A was the toll version. And by ways, like a new GIS based, like you have, actually all these are probably GIS based. And scanning through our code, visitors can come on our call and, you know, do whatever we want to achieve. So I just wanted to say that I would support those, and I think they are doing really great.
Okay. Mayor?
I have something that's not on the list, but.
You want something on the list?
Something that I want us to have maybe a very conversation about, hopefully this won't be a huge distraction, but it troubles me that we don't have Urban Campground on the list. And the reason why is, I mean, I know that the wheels are turning, and so we have this kind of philosophy of, you know, if something's already moving down the track, we don't put it on the list. But in terms of, you know, the optics of what our top priorities are, if we have something like that that, you know, doesn't appear on the list of top priorities, I don't like that, you know? Last year, we ended up, we tended to weird optics of being pleasant being our number one priority for the year. And it was something that, that I put stars on and there's stickers and, you know, wanted to see happen. But I am a little concerned about, you know, if things like, you know, the campground and housing issues are our number one priority, that I think we all kind of agree, and we started something, you know, top five, three there, and not to have it show up on the list. I personally find that troubling.
I think you have, you have a good merit to bring it up. It's very similar to the water treatment plant issue or even the permanent funding issue that we talked about. We have taken some action, but nothing's actually in place. So like Rob was saying, you were saying sort of, or I figured like we've sort of done it, but not yet, that we haven't fully defined it. So if council were buying, I think that that's, again, sending the message, that might be a good thing to have on there.
I would add, sorry, I went too, in a while ago, I used that word expense. Rather say urban campground, I would rather say well managed or supervised urban campground. Because it's, you know, when I discussed that with other people, urban campground needs pile of trash somewhere. And obviously supervised, I would just, I would use those words, probably supervised or managed or something like that.
I would like to say, because we had this on the, on the list before, park rather.
It, it is, but we've sort of classified it as still active, however, we, it's, it really, it could, like, it is sort of active and it, it maybe should be on the list because technically we haven't done any, we haven't allocated money, good money to it. We've just had general discussions. So I think the mayor has a good point.
If you don't do it, you don't do it, the public will say, you guys did it for us. It wasn't even under goal.
That's true.
I think you, you have a great point.
Yeah, so let's, let's put it on there. So supervised or managed, are managed urban campgrounds?
I know my friend, when he went on the tour the other day, and Chad kept reinforcing, it could be a way to say, he kept calling it a gated shelter, gated campground.
Yeah, there's a gated community.
Which, you know, embodies the fact that it's a secure thing and the people are not just roaming around. And that would present, whereas a power pool.
So there's managed urban campground, gated urban campground. Would you like that on there?
There's one of the Vancouver, we can just, we call it whatever we want. There's one of Vancouver, they call it a state street community. So, you know, we don't have to like.
That'd be a tough one to.
That's, I'm not saying that we do that, I'm just saying that, you know, we can, we can.
I want managed urban campground, although we're on there for right now, Baron.
And I guess I might specifically, because I'm not interested in having this operated, you know, and paying for the on going hospital that helped watch, you know, or.
Facilitate.
I mean, I don't care if it's purchased property for or, you know, our.
Help watch a, first one campground or.
Facility.
Just some kind of facility creation of an urban campground or something. Because I don't personally intend for us to be on the hook for keeping it going.
That's, that's another one piece.
Our contribution is the property, and then, and then it's in the hospital or the, or the.
So facilitator.
Yeah, we threw in facilitator. Yeah, yeah, that's what we got.
So while we're on the topic of, of urban campgrounds, I have something to say about that. It's, I've, I've been accused of being somebody that is against the idea of urban campgrounds liberalized, getting in the way of this urban campground. And I want to sign me that. I want to, everybody in this room should know that I had no way opposed to this. In fact, it was my idea to propose the money, barbed two, purchase this property for, for a three quarter urban campground. I'd like to use the Gabrielle's Transitional Housing Council personally ended official capacity and part of, on an integral part of getting that going. And I'm proud to be a part of this council that has these ideas to do their own campgrounds. And just because I haven't set foot on the urban campground in Menford, that's not indicative of my willingness to pursue this. So I'm all in on this one. We need to do it right, however, we're very cautious in how we do this. But yeah, I'd like to see that.
It's always interesting to be in groups coming to buy an agreement. I want this. I want this too. Don't worry about an agreement.
Any other championing of items on this list? I think that was enough.
Yeah, I think, I think we all need to recognize that one, we heard a little, it wasn't the community getting together, but number one is three. It is council, our committees, and the public wants that engagement and continuation of, of that. So I think that's, that's why I was going to say that, to champion that.
Okay, I do, I would like to ask about.
Four?
So who might be the operator of that? I'd like to understand what the momentum is, because that's a, that's a very big idea. What, what landfill, or are we talking about, you know, a very specific property for this? Or are we going to kind of talk about a general interest in making a lot of solar installations for the area?
You're looking at me like that's fine, and it's. Thirteen months now, Ryan, you know?
I know, I know. I, so just expand a little.
Sure.
So we have this property upon foot, it's called Derelict Landfill.
Did you say the Derelict property? I wanted to say landfill. Don't want DQ to come down and say you have a what?
Whatever it is, we can't use it for pretty much anything. However, this classification of property can be used for solar installation. And it's south facing, and it's close to the Jones Creek Substation, just over the hill from that. And this is a really ideal spot if the city's ever going to do a large scale solar project where it's land bare to the outdoors, and it's for anything else, and then infrastructure is close by. But I think the numbers would probably work out well.
So can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah.
So if we put aside all the environmental factors, all of the good reasons, environmental exposure to this, and the social reasons, does it have a positive, positive information? Is the technology improved enough now to afford it to pay for it?
I haven't run the numbers, but there are community solar projects of this scale around the state that are successful. So we would, we would have to, you know, have somebody run the numbers for us. I, that's probably a little bit beyond my capability, but it's being done elsewhere in the state in places that are less sunny than here, and it's working. So I would, I would have to assume that with, you know, our sunny disposition down here, that it would work out even better.
We should go right to the climate question.
Yeah, see, that's my.
That's why I didn't write down, because I kind of.
So is this, so is this worth investigating?
Exactly. You know, the investigation, it, it needs to be investigated, but I, I'm almost certain that at the end of that investigation, it's going to be favorable, I feel, so.
I, I agree with Rob, I think it's why I got it worse.
Sounds valid.
All right.
So far.
Moving forward.
Wait, wait, wait.
Wait. All right, this looks like fun. Uh, let's see, encourage economic opportunities, create implemented plan to use the welcome center to maximize advantages. That's council and staff. In cooperation with county incentivize resort development, create a young tennis plaza with a food pot. And create kayak whitewater park in river. Sign me up, I'll take all of them. So anybody want to champion any of those?
So. All right, so. I say a lot of times we've got to decide if we're going to be a tourist town or we're going to be a self-sustaining town. And in a sense, I think the whitewater park actually could achieve both. It would be something that would definitely improve the town quality of life, could bring people to the town who might want to have a business here. But just from a plain recreation standpoint, you know, they have one in, they have one in Reno. And if you've ever been to Reno, I, I would encourage going to Reno and seeing their river development. Uh, because it's, it's really cool. And I mean, this is something that, you know, they have over on, on the east coast as well. And during the summertime, kids just go down there with their tubes and, and float on their own. And as far as I know, there is not a single one on the I-5 port from LA to all the way up.
That's not true. There's one in Gold Hill that is famous, that Tacoma falls. It is famous for kayakers. The problem.
There's a place.
There's a place. I'm just saying, they actually, one point, we're hoping they wanted to do something there in the houses as well. It's well known around the area.
Okay, well, anyway, you know, I, I sent out a video a year ago, and the guy that has this engineering firm, he's actually an Olympian. He's been here. And he was involved in Gold Hill at one point. And he kind of got frustrated with those guys and threw his hands. But the fact is, he knows his stuff. He was involved with Ben. He's involved with, I think it was Grand Junction. And this is the kind of thing that he could have competitions here, potentially could be an Olympic training location. And I just think this would be huge. It would draw people in, you know, and what do we need to be a tourist town? I say we need a killer app, and this is a killer app. You know, you can have billboards down, down I-5 and ready, you know? People would just be building up excitement as they come in. So I would hope you reserve at least ten dots each.
I want the dots applied, you know?
So as long as I'm talking, you know, the downtown plaza with the food court is, you've also heard me talk about that. I mean, I go up to Portland, I've got two daughters in Portland, there's lots of golf courses. But honestly, when I go up to Portland, I'm really going there for the food court, for the parks, you know, pots. There's a hot corn asylum there, which is, is a great setup, you know, big, big round tables, big torch fire pit, and it's a place people congregate. And, you know, I would like to see something like this downtown. G Street is, you know, where I'd love to see it. See a big archway going over the town, over the street saying, you know, the disco district, or the railroad district, or whatever we decide to do. And I just think that would be the kind of thing people will, will plan and then look forward to coming to Grant's basketball. I'm joining in on. It's okay? Okay, so joining in on the downtown, I, you know, I, I would have my own solution for it. That would be I would raise all buildings of people with people. Uh, I would put in a water feature, I would put in a gas fireplace, I would have Saturday morning market there, I'd have food pots. But I don't want to, I mean, that's just me. And so we got a task force that are looking at this, and I don't want to get ahead of the public. Uh, and Kurt, you've got great ideas, you know? I don't, my ideas are great. Um, but I don't want to get ahead of the public, and that's why we have the task force, so that, uh, you know, we don't want to, in a strategic plan, tell this task force, I don't think, at this point in time, given all the options out there, that this is what we want. I think we want to consider other options as well, and I think, I think we need it somewhere, yeah.
Well, I'm inviting at first, because this actually hit on my question about the way this is worded, because Joel has interpreted this to mean hidden law, and I wanted to view is the downtown plaza, is the plaza part the important part, or is the food court the important part? And does it like?
I think the food court pod is a feature, but does it have to be with plaza? No.
I guess I don't know, like, if I put stars on that, am I supporting creating a downtown plaza? Or am I supporting a food court pod somewhere?
Well, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
I agree, we're, I mean, we're going to have a plaza at some point somewhere. And I think the food court pod is the feature, the feature that we need, or that we, we would want. I'm finding desirable for this town to have.
Could we change it to say, like, something about, you know, creating or investigating, you know, helping to establish a food court pod and not be.
Well, it's.
To a downtown plaza.
So I see what you're saying there, is, and what Joel's saying, technically, the, the task force will be what we have, all the options for the downtown plaza. And so I think that's covered. This could be an option, but many communities have multiple pods. So, and we've got property that we could have a pod, uh, or, or something along those lines. So maybe, maybe it would be better, maybe, maybe it would be better. Well, I think the council members talked to me about that. Um, maybe a food court pod would be, maybe we could scratch out downtown plaza and say, create a food court.
I'm just saying, there's some spots, and yeah, A Street's one. Another one I noticed the other day, it used to be a park a lot, um, every street goes that way, but F, um, that's, it's got like a marijuana, you know, distributor in the little office building, but there's stuff like spoo. So I mean, just a lot of that to me could be a really good spot for a food, uh, pod, but, or, but, um, I guess I, yeah, the downtown plaza bit is a little.
All right, one last thing as far as the, the park. I mean, we could be a tourist town, we could be a self-sustaining town, but no matter what, we're going to be a river city. So can we be a tourist town, and so let's embrace it, you know, both of those, it's a happy one or the other.
Yeah, so I have a, I have sort of a question to comment for here. So this last year, we had amended the regulations for the city for food courts, the fencing issue that we have. I think the security issue, you know, and that's, that's a rightful, all of it, about private, but this seems to be like a private enterprise endeavor. So how do we, how do we cross that bridge, be public, private?
Well, I think you need to create the infrastructure to encourage a pod, right, or business. Even though they're food trucks, most of, people in Portland, most of them are fixed, they're there. And that's quite convenient. We need to have the right location, enhance, and encourage it. I agree. There's a lot of things we can do that we want, and we're depending on somebody in private business to want to see it too. So we have to create the incentives to make it happen.
Or cities designate certain public parking blocks as, this is your food court area, so you got blocks you want to run after this business?
I'd like to, I mean, discuss, say, Thomas and, near the restaurant, how about, you know, whether our public funds come up with more confidence. So, you know, if you want to look at it in that perspective. So, you know, if you wanna look at it from that perspective, Kurt, it might not be the best idea, but a lot of it would be there when you discuss it.
I understand that, it's. And, uh, I mean, Joel and I were talking about this at the coffee shop one day. We had a guy come over and butt in on us, and he.
Yeah, he had ideas.
And he, he was excited about the idea, and he said, you know, I know, and then anybody in that business knows, that those customers over there are my customers too, they're gonna move around. And then the thing is, to create the environment where they come in and they wanna move around.
Well, I can say for sure, between November and April, we've had every tourist in town. So, there's not, there's not a restaurant in town, or a company in retail or in town that aren't hurt. I'm just, I'm wrong, if you get Chris.
On one note, now, now we're starting to debate a topic of, is it a good idea or not? That's not the case. The only question I have with the food court, uh, food court, why, we did have discussion about changing it and taking out the downtown plaza aspect. Do you wanna do that, or you wanna leave it the way it is?
I'm okay with that.
So you, so you'd like to change it to where it's more explore food court pod?
So I have a question.
You know, with the parklets, the restaurants in town would glorify food carts. In a sense.
Yeah, okay, so we'll change that, that one, we'll change, we're working on that one. So, you're gonna be looking at exploration of the food court pod, food court pod. And then any other comments on any of the other items?
Well, I have a question, because we're totally laboring the food court thing. Do we know, are there restrictions in place, because I know there were at one time, um, that would kind of help, that provide it, food court, you know, the food trucks, or, you know, there's kind of, I know at one point, the city went to some, like, developed regulations about the drive-through coffee stands back in the day. So like, I mean, as far as on whole, and what, you know, I mean, if a kind of private business, a private landowner, I mean, there's lots of, A Street, I think, has a pretty good parking law, you know, the new P of A, um, thing that the Osmonds are doing, like, um, is there a reason why those property owners couldn't today?
They can.
Seven-five trucks?
They could, they can.
Okay, so.
And then actually, we were gonna have one north of town by the Chamber, Chamber's office.
James, we did it, right?
So the whole, like, there were some things.
So you can do it, that would more sound.
It felt like making them kind of permanent structures, and I think that's.
Is this something that Urban Renewal could be? As far as infrastructure, that, or is it?
Oh, or renewal, oh, so Urban Renewal could potentially be used if you took a lighted piece of property that's not being used right now, and if you put in the infrastructure to incentivize that the private businesses coming in doing that, you might be able to do it, something like that.
I do have a couple questions about the Baker Park, and I'm gonna preface this by saying, it's time that we do something awesome fun, and this is awesome fun. Uh, for this side of the room, Jason Brad, just hipshot, are there any environmental or resource usage concerns associated with, uh, creating, you know, butterfly recreation on our river?
Many.
Yeah, many, okay.
They're, they're not insurmountable, but there's.
Okay, very good, and that's, that's what, that's what I would think, but I already knows how, I know you probably want all the answers to that, but.
I was just emailing Adam, because I think that there's, there was a preliminary report done ten, twelve, fifteen years ago by a firm. I remember Counselor Berlant, Greg Berlant was the city counselor, Laurel Sampson was involved. But there was a report on this subject, and it looked at the section across from Baker Park, um, as a potential location. Um, so there's some preliminary work, I'll try and dig up.
We'll try, we'll try it down and.
It is, it is, it went into all of those issues, but it is, it is a possibility.
Now, you said they're not insurmountable, but are we infestable?
Oh, yeah.
And I don't get that, I lose, but I mean, it's like, hey, this is a.
What do you have to consider, you know, you've got several species of endangered aquatic.
Yeah, I'd say it's feasible, because people do it elsewhere, and this would also be an urban renewal agency project.
And I need to talk to the engineer about that topic, because I'm watching now terrible companies. So another, it's heated, they're ruining other places. Another, they, they account for fish travel through there. So.
Another quasi-question that would happen, further understand this, is the, the general flooding traffic. We have a lot of people, just recreation people, river, kayak man, or butterfly kayak center, where there's like a lane for it to get by. Or a bed or something like that, so.
These things are probably all.
That's a video I sent you.
I thought, I thought I remembered, fifteen years ago, whenever Eric had been pushing this. As I remember it, really, it just wasn't enough consensus under wasn't funding. And that, that seemed to be, it just was lackadaisical, that seemed very doable. And actually, I mentioned to Kurt, that you might wanna talk to Eric, your landing person. That's, that's, I just remember being a lackadaisical consensus, lack funding. So, that's all I'm saying, it's like, amazing idea.
Yeah, I had a little bit of a delayed reaction to what you said, you said, the over-renewal, or something like this.
If it's in the zone of the, in, in, in our zone area, it would be a potential urban renewal project.
Is the waterway getting urban renewal?
The park is, and part of the waterway might be, uh, and for the development of the park area where we, we're.
Right, Kurt, you gave some of my doubts, buddy. All I ask is ten.
The thing to think about is Cory, who was our new Destination Marketing Director, when she came, and what I think she's saying, and that's why she kinda wanted to give the tourist advisory committee, is that she wants them to help build up assets for our destination. That was her point, and we still need public input on destination IP's that would help promote our destination. So I think that might be a great way to, on all the tourist advisory things, as for.
So if this gets the dots and stuff, then we'll draw up that report, we'll get it to you, and we'll start making progress.
Yeah.
Just one more, two minutes, the only thing that concerns me is a lack of focus. And so you got, you got the bicycle trails at Dollar Mountain, that the lighthouses and the tourist attraction. Great idea on kayaks, we got the skate park, that's gonna be done, we got the art maintenance that we have to catch up on the urban maintenance. So, this is our focus, that's, that's the only thing that bothers me, that's, that's a great idea.
It exists.
Awesome.
Yeah.
And it's energy. You know, I'll just, I'll just throw out, I'll just throw out the topic of this outdoor recreation. Uh, cause I didn't think of this when we were putting this together, but we got a pretty successful business in town called Zip Line. We have no zip line in town. Right? I mean, your path would be.
Down Rock, Riverside.
It's, no, it's, it's. I'm not, I'm sorry, Cloud Falls, that's just a park, it's a play, it's a blind area, and it's.
Off the news.
Yeah.
Time I watch this non-stop.
Beacon Park, Zipline Park.
I have a toddler.
It's elevated, it's got space.
So I'd like to bring up number one.
Oh, no, sure.
I already talked about the welcome center, you know, in time, it's one of the red, it's a motion. Yeah, it's full motion. So maybe, uh, a few things. Number one is that, uh, even the, uh, the, that's nice, Mark, that you saw, that's the best place for the bathrooms, that's the best place for welcome center. I think that we all know for decades to come, that is not gonna change. That's what we want, bathrooms, and that's what we want, welcome center. So, we know what we want there. We also, uh, you know, we talked about, you know, what we need to do with the building. I think ideally, now, I know that Brian, I think, we brought it up, and I also agree with that, yeah. Having, you have to install another bathroom there, having doors open from the outside, lock the inside to the welcome center. And you don't, bathrooms, you don't necessarily, bathrooms are for warmer hours. I think was an idea that we all seem to think was a really good use of that space. So, to me, there are not a lot of moving parts here. It's not like we gotta take it out to public, or, oh, it's not good, like, we gotta go to any community or commission. I mean, we just have to commit to doing it. And I, you know, to me, I just wanna get that done, this is awesome.
And we've got, we've got the restroom, uh, concept coming to you in February, and I know February 7th, we've got the proposal for the Welcome Center, uh, best use for the Welcome Center coming to you. So those are two things that are already scheduled for the workshop.
It's great, the two things that, you know, we hear a little bit about, we actually, Chamber wants to do, Destination Marketing wants to, you know, uh, they wanna, uh, the office there, and I'm thinking, all that could change, I mean, they might wanna rent it for years, not like forever. So to me, I would, I would make the best use of the, uh, the, uh, for Welcome Center. If you have a couple of knockoffs, it's somebody who ran for some purpose. I don't wanna have to wait for all those pieces to be absolutely lined up in a row, because that may never happen. We already know, we want to. Then all we gotta do is really have the historical sites, to be sure, also the outsides, or whatever, like, or give us some options. They've already done that, of course, that's like a plan, yeah.
Well, I will say that I, I talked to Josie, and she has to be, she just has to go for the board in terms of the, the Chamber getting back the proposal that was put to them. They did, you know, RFP, the city was gave them the RFP, and so they are, if possible, getting back to us soon, soon. So that's, but I agree with you, I mean, we've been kicking this K and N road, I think all of us agree that building needs to stay, be an asset to the city, I think we all agree on that. So it's just a matter, simply, like, it comes right back to when we talk about the board visually, what do we want?
I agree with you.
Start.
It is our, our plan also to increase the function down there.
Yes, we, actually, the city's plan is for the city to, the proposal we have, city maintain that, 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 uh, that position down there is an important connection, and we broaden and expand the use of the Welcome Center, focusing on our main Welcome Center. So we're looking forward to giving you that presentation on Saturday.
So do we need to put dots on that?
Yeah, that's a question, no, that's what I'm saying.
I'd probably say no.
Yeah, don't waste your guts on that.
I know.
Under Encourage Economic Opportunities, continuing, identify and promote economic opportunities, support airport development, work with the county, and joint ventures that promote our entire region, and implement urban renewal agency projects.
I was really.
Oh, okay, I'm swiping. Thank you. Okay, continuing under Economic Opportunities, eight through twelve. Conduct a paid report on how the city can support job creation. Quarterly review of build-land inventory. Increase land base for housing development. Continue programs in UGB and other areas to incentivize private companies to relocate here, and support the DMO in their quest to build our destination. Champions on that for questions. Counselor.
Number ten.
Yes.
Increase land base for housing development. Uh, I actually feel that this is really important towards meeting our housing challenges, is to make a concerted effort to use some of the resources we have to basically, uh, procure land that we can use to incentivize other people to build on, similar to what we're doing in Grant's. But we have our money available, we probably have some other resources available that we could use. We definitely have our money available to put towards, um, creative land bank that we can use in that fashion. So, Doug Walker said we need to do all the things to encourage and get over the housing prices, and I think this one is good.
So, what does that mean, increased land base for housing development? Are we talking about us expanding even reserves?
Uh, that's, that's what that says to me, that says, you know, creation, what that's, what that says to me is, if we see available our three or our fours on land, we buy it, and then we use that as a grant for someone to build models of high density.
Sure, because that's, that what you just proposed is, is, is a noteworthy action that helps all, that's something that actually can be done. That's, that's incentive, kind of like that word incentive, it's not regulation, it's not mandatory, this is, this is truly something that can be done to help encourage the landfill, that was encouraged by the 2014 council, that's, that's a great idea. Thanks for pointing that out.
Part of my expectation is, I don't really want the city to get in the land business, like it has in the past. You know, when, when the city purchased, see, I think we purchased like over a million dollars in.
I don't have that number in my head.
And now, we're, now we're putting it out there for somebody to pick it up, which they are. And whether they will change it or not, I don't know, that's part of, so I, I don't know if you wanna get there, it's always going to happen. But I, I do think expansion of the property, and maybe one week's family or property, maybe the city takes part in some of those properties, because I don't wanna see us heavily invested voluntarily in these properties and then start losing money. But the one thing that you're stating, is the city owns a property, and you have a developer that's looking for property that is available, whereas a lot of these people don't wanna sell, so there's, there's available point there to the city, yes. And it's inventory that can be available.
Yeah, so I, I, I think that this is good discussion, because I, the increased land base, I was wanting more information on what that meant, because and where it goes. Is it an economic thing, is it a, a housing thing that maybe needs to go under another goal? My understanding from our discussion is that it is the city proactively purchasing property and helping to incentivize the development, whatever that, whatever that is. And, and what I'm hearing, it might not necessarily be affordable housing, it could be just housing.
Specifically, moderate to high density. I don't, I don't know that it necessarily has to be correlated to income level, but just, um, just straight up units, like, like. I think the, so maximizing density, uh, kind of what you need to go.
So, I guess, there, I know you, you're probably gonna throw out, but the goal that we already have that, who says that?
Well, I didn't, I like this idea, but, uh, somewhere, I'm trying to find it in here, somewhere also, I think there was one that was tagged like land bidding.
Was that a different one?
Which? Oh, from the last call, it's no wonder I couldn't find it, I'm like, I'm going through these. So I guess I wanna understand what's the difference, what the difference is. And then just kind of clarify, what are we talking about here? Because I, I think maybe I do wanna get into the purchasing business, if it needs, you know, if Phil is getting things going. I think in my real world, that would maybe not be the city's role, but I think we're maybe at that place where we need to.
Can you bear that, so that's why Alan was coming in front of us on Monday, is because the city doesn't have land now. And they can do that. But I think as, I think as the, as the state of construction excise tax, whatever, builds, um, a source of money, that that is, that is what some other cities have done, is they bought off the, and then they put in infrastructure to it, so that it's ready to go.
It's something where maybe it's light, you know, pulse and urban renewal, you know, possibly, it's also in this category, I don't know. But I did wanna just clarify, like, what those two things are, like, where to put the dots, are they the same, are they different?
I don't know.
So, yeah, and now I wanna get there, so the way this reads to me, it, it says, get more available build-land by expanding UGB, changing or reserve or grow boundary, doing something along those lines. So if this is more the land bank, where the city's actively purchasing property, I think, then maybe we, if that's what the goal of that is, is act, is city actively acquiring property for a land bank, then that's, maybe we just refer to the land bank.
And I forget, this may not even have been, like, I don't remember how I worded it, maybe, I might have seen it on the last call. But, but my intent was to advocate for us to, uh, for a land bank concept of, of procuring.
So can we scratch this then, because land bank is on last call, and then it'll be?
Normally, I have increased derivative value, right? It's, we probably said that.
Well, that's why I wanted to clarify, the, the galils of that, very, very challenging in the next two quarters, according to DLC.
Okay.
The, the numbers that we're seeing in our, in our HNA are, are not going to pass the threshold for the state to approve any UGBs.
Good, explaining, fresh.
Well, in a twenty-year projection, it's, it's, you're just not gonna be there. So that, that's what I was like, what I'm asking you. That's a totally different concept we used to describe, but if, if the council's expectation on that is literally expanding current UGBs, it's not gonna happen.
You're talking about the population objection?
Population on housing.
Well, largely that, we have to, with what we have now, is right, I mean, technically, we have brought land in, but we haven't built on it. So to project out, to a part of how, is that what you're saying? We're not gonna be able to go out and. We're not gonna be able to go out, it doesn't make any sense, which is what you have in your...
We just expanded in twenty four years.
We have a specific objective coming up on the second floor and six and seven.
So I want to make sure, I want to stay focused here, we're starting to talk about, I'm not sure what, so. On this, word okay is, does anyone have any objection, scratching the tin is as represented as land? So okay, let's scratch the tin.
So if people want to support the land bank, it's on the last call?
Yes, yes. Okay, so any other questions or champion of these projects?
So I kind of wanted to go a little bit to that land bank thing, and sort of expanded into this idea. So as we know, there's resources, I don't really know how to get this distinctly sorted to a bull, or maybe it's something that we need to discuss, but solutions to our housing crisis, incentive is the big word. And we have the ability to reallocate some resources from scale-up projects or whatever, and aren't many millions of dollars sources, and I think that that's a great use of that money, that I think that can actually make a difference. But deciding to guard those funds, reallocate those funds for the use of pursuing solutions to our housing crisis, here's my idea that we can do, that I can get behind. Having the general discussion of, one, let's do something about housing prices, two, let's reallocate those money, and three, find out what to use those monies on, I think that's a big picture goal that I'd like to see manifest. At least discussions this year.
Definitely workshop.
Yeah, okay. So if we all, you know, I'd like to see, I'd like to see us discuss that in a series.
So is that a part of the issue?
I think so.
And so can you, just so I understand in the spirit, what would be the topic, and it would be...
Well, we've been talking about evaluating all the projects, right? And reallocating some funds, and kind of part of that momentum has been responding to housing prices. So I think I've said one, and reallocate those funds to a lot of money that the city can do to help encourage.
Okay, so, okay, so let's see, that's...
I'm having trouble.
Yeah, that would have to be done if land bank becomes an item in the strategic plan, but it's a priority.
Well, but that's, that's one piece of the pie, you know, it's not like let's, let's, let's reallocate a million dollars and spend all on buying land. The idea of land bank, which is a great idea, is a good use for those, but first we need to reallocate the funds, then we need to figure out what we're going to do with it regarding housing.
Okay, I think I've got it, so how about a workshop on general fund reallocation considerations to support housing?
Great. You know, we've had discussions about LB project reallocation.
Yes.
And they're almost two separate discussions, there's like, what do we want to reallocate? And then what do we want to do with those reallocations? I don't know that they need to be unextricably linked, that we're taking all the money, like we're reallocating and throwing it towards housing. I think those are really two separate topics, like we need to figure out what's available to be reallocated, then we need to decide what we want to reallocate.
So coming through strategic planning with the direction from what you're giving us today and the current strategic plan, we will be providing you with a recommendation of how the monies would be allocated based on your direct, your policy direction from strategic planning. You will review that. The question that has to be further defined is are you going to review that with Budget Committee or not? And you will review that and determine whether or not those funds are, and make what are changes you want in a time of infraction where we can incorporate that in budget, most of the budget. So we are going to be doing that, and so that will be linked to that process.
Yes, and that's kind of my question.
Yes, hold on.
I don't want to walk down a degree hole, but I also figured that another question about that in terms of funding that I have goes to, I know general fund and, you know, that money and LB projects is something you can do. Something I quite want to talk with is, within our enterprise funds, that's kind of like a business, it's an enterprise, we don't really have any say over it. But at one point in time, the bulk water, which is in, I'm assuming that a bulk water sale comes through the enterprise.
Yeah, it stays in, it stays in water.
It stays in water, so can we take that bulk water money that has come in and put it towards infrastructure?
Water.
Water infrastructure? I mean, can, do we have that ability as a public policy setting, people to say, we would like to have more of that, knowing that that's been on the increase, go towards water infrastructure for housing?
You can't, for housing, no, but for water, for water infrastructure, yes.
That's what I'm saying, water infrastructure.
And you can do that, yeah.
For the bulk water.
I'm just saying, sorry, a dollar you receive through your bulk water station is no different than a water, a dollar you receive through a water. They're the same dollars, they all go into the same pot, it's not like it's held off separately. You know, we can track them, and if you just want to take a number to say, okay, well, anything that goes through bulk water, we allocate, but they're no different, and they all go into the same pot of money, and we allocate those out to capital projects.
And the water infrastructure, I think you said, is a lot of expenditure.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
I just wanted to say that there are sources that we have.
One, a quick point, you know, last year in the budget, I know I would have been helpful on the LB funds to also have a date of inception on that fund, because a lot of times you guys thought there it's dusty, hasn't been used. We're not really sure how old it is, but right away, if something's, you know, put aside eight years ago and hasn't been used yet, to me, that's what I can prove.
We'll see if we can track some of that down, is that... Yeah, okay.
I just want to know if there are any expenses that everyone ordered pizza? Ah, yeah.
We're not going to get my pizza.
We're not going to get my... Okay, any other champion on these items?
I am not wholly sure I'm comfortable with how that's written, because it says general fund reallocation for housing, and I think it should just be general fund reallocation, because we don't know if it's going to be for housing or for something else.
Sure, now you're right, that unusual exclusivity of, of general fund reallocations can be very broad a topic.
Yes.
Right? I would prefer to, I'm not saying that we, that we reallocate all of our resources instead of all on housing. I would like to keep it focused on housing, that would evaluate reallocations and see how much we have, determine how much we would like subsidized, and keep the focus on housing.
Okay, so do you want to focus it, can we, can we, if this general fund, if we actually truly do general fund on this topic, then it's going to be public safety, fire, how about LB, general fund, LB?
So you had brought up general fund, yes, you're correct.
General fund, LB.
We need to stay away from, we're stealing away from the profits of spending on property, there's a...
And just scratch out housing, we're gonna have a discussion on general fund, LB, reallocation, we're gonna do it, it means obviously it's going to come with a budget process.
There are, they don't, they don't necessarily involve any conversation about housing.
Yeah. Champion here? It's it? Facility Sustainable Management Growth, one through four, explore eligible property for moderate density housing, provide additional ARPA monies to mitigate water rate increases, practically annex portions of the urban growth boundary, and expand urban growth boundary.
So, just talking about...
Okay.
So, we're gonna be, gonna have a series of workshops about available buildable land inventory, how we got where we are, and where we truly are with available buildable lands, and how that affects housing prices. And I think that's really linked to understanding annotation of urban growth boundary. So I think that's going to naturally happen. I think four, we determined that's not happening, one, to have things. Anyway, but going back to three, I want to bring up again the idea that Valerie had about individuals' rights to perhaps bring their own property into the city limits for development. You know what I'm talking about, apparently if you want to bring property into the city limits, it needs to be voted on by the people, but a good idea that Valerie had was that if an individual owns a property that's not continuous, to be able to have a clearly defined mechanism to apply to get their property and extended city for development. I think that that's kind of tied to, in my opinion, this number three, is that allowed at a state level? So just doesn't the state regulate how that can occur?
You have to be continuous.
Yeah. So and sometimes they use streets to get there, alley cherry stinning or something along those lines, but, and we've got, we've got, based on Mark's recommendations, in the situation that you mentioned from Valerie, if an owner wants to annex, if it's the owner and in a few of the annexation processes, we don't have to go to vote anymore, we can just do it. But we need to educate the community about their options to be able to do that, too.
When did that, when did that, sorry, when did that change?
I don't know.
It's about seven, eight months ago.
Okay, so it is for the reason...
It's fairly recent, yeah, Mark let us know about it, it's already been said, so.
Okay, well, then that, that's just, I just want to satisfy then.
So we're...
My question is...
Now, my question to me is, is the new case law that allows people to appeal to enter their own property, and is that, that satisfy your opinion, because I want to continue to pursue your idea, because...
Well, Mark, I'm going to say my idea will be brought forward, because we have so many coming Wednesday for meetings to talk about what they're, the process they're going to have to go through to get an stand. My question is, as this one, this one only has like one little two-year space, but everybody on board, there are the pain, this is...
Yes.
For everything they want to vote, and there's more subdivisions out there that have the same issue going on, is they've been annexed, their developer, when the developer built the property, he put that in, so everybody signed on to a service agreement. It's just, they have, they did say, right, they, everything, they just can't vote. And there are some pockets out there that we need to let those people know, hey, if you want to vote, this is how you need to get there. My question is, is as those people are annexed, is then suddenly they're in, so does that mean the next people who are continuous to that property can do the same thing? So that's, that's the process that can start happening, because if you get one representative annexed to the city, then that allows more people who are continuous, they check in.
Yes.
As long as they're in their...
I think, yeah, this requires a workshop, because I could go into law market telling you some issues with that, and today's not for being...
No, it's, it's gonna be...
Is it fair to presume that this cannot be a part of those workshops you're...
I think, I think I would want to park in line, say, and have an actual workshop on to make it clear, annexation processes and S and A agreements.
Okay, I think that would be great, because if we do have an available buildable land inventory issue, which we do, I think it's really important that we undergo an educational pursuit, so everybody on board clearly understands the process of the S and A agreements, connotation works, and all those different things.
Yeah, I think we need to get there.
I have a question, is annexing in properties in UGB, is that the key to eliminating the intergovernmental region?
It's not, no, it's just the rezoning, it's a big thing, yeah.
I don't think it's worth the money, because that's a deliberate conversation, I mean, that's why I asked going into this, are we going to be discussing ARPA funding?
Whenever Plaza wants to. We're, I love that, we actually have, I think we have ARPA, we have ARPA scheduled, because I want you to know what city staff has as recommendations for ARPA funding, so at that point, we're gonna present, you can have a general discussion on it.
Okay, so I'm just saying, so...
There's a workshop on it.
I'm just saying.
Thank you very twenty second.
Very twenty second, what we bring to you, our recommendations from staff on ways to...
And then just, just for...
Well, that was my point, is...
We've done that, we've allocated three million, which is in effect going to mitigate...
Right, but I'm thinking what that does is that's someone saying that by addition, they're saying, not just three, it should be five, or it should be six.
Reading words are harder.
Oh, yeah, in terms of stickers, I think that, I mean, we ought to have that ARPA discussion, so...
I think that's all generally, I'm just not sure if this is great, all the...
Facility Sustainable Management Growth Development Density Bonus Program. Fine tune CET and promote available funds for all qualifying projects. Develop transitional housing project turnkey, use our renewal to redevelop redwood hotel, and promote ABU program in case study.
Take your hands, say, the number six. Number six, fine tuning CET, obviously, we need to do that. But, you know, the second part of that, maybe, you know, maybe it goes on the set, or maybe it needs to be said. Advertising it, wanting to build really those funds for all our projects. Like, you know, Doug was saying yesterday about the builder, two years in, you need to know that he's used or possible or available, that he can do it. So here's somebody who's active, and the message they're gonna have to him. So I'm concerned also the same way there, when we're looking for urban renewal partners, that everybody in town, every developer in town knows that we're willing to listen to their proposals. Same deal with CET, we need, we're just to get out there to the general public, or anybody that might be qualified, that they even exist. So having them available is one thing, and making sure that the public knows it exists. And there could be, you know, obviously, it's not the perfect way, it's one way, and it's very expensive. The city, the city newsletter obviously doesn't go to everybody, but it's cheap, it's easy, and it'll go to a lot of homes that potentially just want to do a native. So I want to find a way to, we got, you know, public funds for that, to make sure that we advertise the CET on the development.
There's three steps, there's getting the funds, because we don't actually have any funds yet, so we gotta get some funds. Then we have to do the fine tuning part, where we decide the best thing for our budget, as far as what the funds could or should be used for, as far as what we want to get out of it. Then once we have those, then we let everyone know about it. We don't want to let everyone know about it before we've got the first two things down, right?
Well, if I can kind of add that, this general LB fund reallocation, I would suggest that we actually reallocate some funds and start implementing these incentives, right? With the anticipation that annually we're gonna have revenue of CET, so we actually, we can start as soon as possible, we can start in the next week if we wanted to, to start spending these monies and incentivize, and then just start having a volume revenue fund of CET.
We could see that one, too.
Sure.
So step one's done, so we...
Yeah, we're setting it down.
We have to do the fine tuning part before we black it out.
But awareness that we're building these, we have to fine tune it, because if you're getting whatever else, it's changed. So we got, we got to fine tune it, like, right, right?
Well, I think that if you, there was an email that came yesterday from E Chamber, and they have like over six hundred businesses that are involved in this, and they want to have, they have some questions, and so they want to bring those questions to us, so that we can work those things out. So I think that is in the works right now to work out those budgets, and that's my sense, is that they will. But you're right, you know, we can, we can do this, so certain benefits incentivizing ahead of time, and let them see possibilities, and work with them to work those...
I think we could, and we should.
Yeah, and I agree, I think that, if we're gonna get things rolling, then it will just kind of naturally come through that. Because I do think that there are some parameters on CET that right now, we'll kind of hold back, we don't necessarily have to use ARPA funds under the same guidelines, but we could use our incentivized real thing in general, knowing that this is, these funds are being set aside for specifically, you know, for the...
Sure, and we can look at it, and we're quite fortunate to be able to reallocate some of those monies, and start acting, having a way for, for, for them to do anything about it. So yeah, this is all we have, we're very fortunate to have that...
As, as we fine tune the C E T, I think a piece of that that would be good for us to have is if, you know, if we get staff's perspective on, you know, if there's, you know, maybe Brad or planners or housing specialists give us their opinion on where the best thing for our buck is going to be as far as how the C E T is used. In addition to the Chamber and everyone else. But I definitely want to have staff's opinion on how the best use of the C E T money as well.
Going back to what Rob was saying, I think awareness that is, our car's going to be sold.
The second thing, one of the three numbers, number eight. Urban Hotel. There's a few things that, first of all, it's, uh, unstable store landmark, they're not, they're not building up anymore. So, uh, it's right in the middle of town, two, two state highways right there. And it can be an amazing asset for somebody, whether it's, whether it's hotel or it's condos, whatever it is, uh, whether it's low income housing, whatever it is. Nonetheless, get it, get it, watch well. Clearly, uh, I'm trying to disparage, but I'll be right to disparage. Uh, the guy who owns it now, it's clear over the last, you know, thirteen years or something, he is not going to make that happen. And I, I spoke to him a couple, I spoke to him a decade ago, and I spoke to him a couple times more recently. Whatever reason, he's not the guy that's going to make that happen. So if we want to see that as functional, attractive, productive, decent property, then we've got to come up with something similar to what we're doing with the Townside Plaza. We need to put it out there to other developers, we need to obviously discuss the contents first. You know, always ask the question, uh, by advice. But I think that our goal is not to say to manage it, the whole funds are going to have that. We want to turn it over to somebody that can make, uh, we want the partner to make something. Because it would be awesome as a, like I said, condo might be great, uh, but just to add to how it could be still being done now, it could be good.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think one of the one things pulling back is like elevator thing and some of those. So you're right, so maybe let him know that he is putting the cost together of what he has, that he knows has, that it should be productive. Because there are things that have to be done in the point code to bring it, to make it manageable.
I, I think that, you know, you spoke about, I think, whatever, you can't get out of the old way of this. I don't know why it is.
I don't know, I think he's talking about his back in planning as a, this is.
Yeah.
Can't go there, but you know what I'm just saying?
This was, yeah, this was a project, this was a project, it would be something like what Rob was saying. The city would probably need to purchase it, and then you could do an R F P, incentivize whatever we want as condos, affordable houses, and, and turn it over to somebody and make it happen, so.
So I'd like to really, you know, investigate, you know, the possibility of us getting involved on some level of that, uh, whether that's offering, you know, maybe some type of air offer. So I, I'd like to basically turn that into a project. You need, you know, six-story, you know, uh, store. It's actually pretty good. Um, I'd like this as something.
Yeah, most, most are child for urban renewal. Most are child for urban renewal. I mean, you can't, it should be on the, you know, you look up the dictionary, this building.
I know.
Urban renewal. Um, yeah, it could be really great, I mean, whether it's a boutique hotel or condos, uh, it could just reinvent your, if that whole north of Townside area, like the ripple effect would be huge.
Any other championing of these items here or questions on them?
I do have a couple. I believe one of my recommendations would not add it, and it is to be a downtown mixed-use development study.
Okay. So.
What is it?
Complete a mixed-use development study to that account.
Sure.
It's successful. There is, there is one on the last one, but it is, uh, it is for both mixed-use, right? This is completing a study on the possibility of.
So, okay, all right.
I think that, I think that this is especially important, um, for in-vill. Uh, you know, in-vill is easier, we, 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 how many days, you know, to achieve this.
So we'll, we'll go ahead, we'll go, go ahead, tell us how you got it.
Complete, uh, downtown mixed-use development study. And this was actually, um, kind of a very passive suggestion from General, also, when he gave it from the downtown.
We'll go add that to the board.
Let's see, when it comes to that, like it's E or like?
Do you want to talk more about that?
Yeah, I kind of think there's not a big, substantial, this is a good area. Um, and also, number seven, develop a transitional housing project, Turnkey. What we had this up our air community last year, I think it was not successful.
It was so close.
It was very close.
Turnkey was almost on the paper.
Yeah, like, it's been moving in that way. Um, just last week, uh, actually, I think it was the city of Bend, or the, of also, cities around us were moving in this way.
So we've talked about that, so, but we were to do that, this city is, right, and you hold it for. That was our.
It was not, it was going to go through the healthcare community foundation, and they are going to receive a competitive grant from the state of Oregon. Uh, so the approach is varied, you can either, uh, the city move forward, or hopefully a foundation, or maybe if we're willing to try again, but if we're willing to do it ourselves, or if we're willing to support fair enough, or whatever that looks like, I would just like to support it.
Is the, is, I, I know that they, they stopped the program, they, they must have said, Ben just did this, they must have agreed, they agreed. Because I know that at one point in time, it was a closed timeframe.
The city of Bend, they go like, general.
Okay.
So they're, they're versed in that way, yes. But I know we are receiving some, but just like this year.
Million dollars.
A million dollars.
So.
And also ARPA.
And ARPA.
It's not, I'm just hoping to talk about it, it's a new project.
So Project Turnkey, that specifically addresses the state money. Right? You know, that's their term? That's their term.
But that gives you an idea of what it is.
Okay, just to do it, okay.
I have a question. We technically use urban renewal money, and that was in the, um, was it in urban renewal, just a question.
Yes, that is an urban renewal project. Yep.
Uh, just to dovetail on that, you know, the transitional housing hotel is, as far as how rubber tree does continue on the services, they've got, they can't, they've got, you know, the village, and this is, this is just another piece back in the middle of moving people out of homelessness into productive society, so I think this is the one piece.
So did you take the tour of the new hotels they acquired?
I will not raise my hand on that.
All right.
I'm behind.
Sure.
Behind, sorry.
So there you go.
I was just saying, he met the artist.
So what they're doing is, they're making studio apartments out of the hotel.
Mm-hmm.
Really working on that.
And they're working with the hospital, because the hospital, so the hospital's helping pay for it, because hospitals have no place to lease people who are two, when it's, they have to come to the hospital, like, they're based on them, nursing homes can't necessarily pay them. So it's part of the money that they're getting reverse problems from hospitals in order to do that. So it's just interesting, all, all the, all the funding sources, if you think of it as being funding sources, that can help. Or money through. Yes.
The other one I want to champion is the promote A D U program case study. You know, this is another thing for housing, which is at the top of people's minds. And I think the A D U needs to be kind of started, you know, we had a good little start, but got, you know, we have one creative group plan out there. But currently, you know, I think, I think there's a lot of room for us to improve. I think if we get a couple more creative group plans and smaller sortages that would make it, um, more accessible to more homeowners, not only from a capital perspective, as far as how much it's going to cost them, but from a accessibility, as far as what they can fit in their yard perspective. So if we can do some work around promoting a smaller A D U, whether that's a four or five hundred square foot, and we could make it easier for homeowners to navigate that process, if we could have some sort of actual, you know, program or a piece like handouts or something that can help people not have to re-visit the wheel every time someone wants to build A D U if it's, parts of that are kind of like, you know, it's almost like a trail of breadcrumbs for them, instead of having to have all these questions, and then do all the labor, you know, the city can have some literature or something that can, that can help them along the way to make it, uh, you know, a more effective piece of the solution for housing.
I think I saw the word. I think you made something of the word.
Probably did. Look, we probably did, yeah, but this, this would, that, I mean, getting that.
That's like one time, it's like, you need to use, and it's like, I think it needs to be more specific. It's like, this is step one, this is step two, this is how much this might cost, you know, where it's really spelled out, make it as easy as possible.
And I kind of agree with that, I think that, on the question, I guess I see eighty-nine things spinning my dots, and a lot of them, I'm communicating, saying, wow, we need to get that division coordinator working, we need to have that person, because I can see many roles that they can fill in terms of like helping with communication within committees, sending out a newsletter, working with our housing specialists and our housing committee to say this, 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 and this, and that's their job. And that's why I see this huge hole, and I, I just feel stretched, and I'm just saying, hey, we need a P R person.
Yeah, you can all agree on that.
Yeah.
I see this as more, more than market.
We need more.
Not just getting the.
It stresses me out just thinking about that.
Yeah. Okay, I think, I think we're a long topic, Mel, can, can any other championing of these projects here? We may not ready to expand our infrastructure, we've got first four pump track study. We have extend pumping utilities to incentivize private development. We have designate the H S, H A C to recommend its community development block grant allocations. And we have monitor progress of the third lane on Redwood Highway. Okay, and I think number four is linked to your one before, so we should probably cross number four out.
Yes.
Let's cross number four out, okay.
I gotta, I gotta start it with pump track. And this speaks to our community not having enough things for young people to do. Kids in this town would love to have something like this. I think that the only thing standing in the way of that happening is us, you know.
It's us.
We have resources, so we have parts of resources available to do this. Parks Committee's recommended it, I think it's a great idea. Once I make touch point, I thought it was a great idea, and I don't agree on much, but at least we agree on this one. But, yeah, I, I think it would be great for our town, I think it'd be great for the kids, and I think they, you know, it would just be awesome, so.
Little semantics issue on this one, that I think this study could be a little really specific, and it'd just be like pursue uh, creating a pump track. Instead of being a study.
Uh, doesn't seem to me that it needs a study at this point, I mean, it's been talked about for years, it's not overly technical, it's not, uh, you know, so pump track project, uh, or just pump track.
I think with a location study, which is trying to figure out where would be the best location.
Pursue the. Where's your set card? Pursue the gray spot. From what? Well, Parks Committee talked about location and the, the few that they came up with was Redwood Park, Hill Creek Park, um, Riverside. So, they've kind of, if it wasn't a study, but they've already discussed location, those were the spots they came up with, so. Study seems like it's almost, it's almost like a pool where it's going to be drawn after a couple more years, but it doesn't really necessarily need to be, so.
Well, I will just go back to my own concern, and like I said, I agree, I agree with you, even for our kids, we all are in town, but I feel a little guilty with the pump track study up there, where we haven't even done skateboards. Skateboards, I mean, skateboards still hanging out there, so.
Well, that's.
Is it, I, I, that's my question, where are the skateboards?
Yeah, the R F P, uh, is, is, is done, it's really just a matter of the timing, they're not going to be able to do anything with it for another couple of months because of the weather.
But it is in the process.
The R F P, yeah, yeah, the engineering is, it's, it's not, it's not a terribly difficult technical project, it's a lot of surface engineering. But I think it's going to go out in March, the R F P.
Right, did your committee discuss Beacon Hill?
Well, I wasn't on the committee, so, you know, this last year they discussed it, I, I'm in meetings, but I wasn't necessarily like. I, I think, I think they looked at all the parks, and I don't know that, I don't think Beacon Hill was one of the ones that they, that was up at the top, but.
I don't know, it wasn't, it wasn't, I mean, it was last year that, that was discussed in Beacon Hill. Uh, I know before, it was one of the council before, I was on the Parks Committee, they, they looked at the Parks Committee, and they talked about Beacon Hill.
Like, it was.
And then, and then they were so focused on B Street, and it moved the ground, and that got done. Uh, but beyond that, there is a, a discussion that's entitled on the committee, on the pump park, except that it was a priority, and that we left it. I think it was based on the discussion of Beacon Park.
And originally, the pump park was put up there because that's what they were looking at, the Beacon Hill Park, and had, they had to move it. So they were looking, and at that point, that's why they would have put it up there, Beacon Hill, that's because it was, Travis was having to move.
Oh, yeah.
But they had, they thought that might be the place for, that it became complicated, so they moved to Beacon Hill, and they did that to avoid there. And they also, at that time, about Beacon Hill, it's something in the neighborhood, because nobody. Because they find Beacon Hill, they can, well, yeah, it's not there, and that's kind of, but, I don't know. I just think a lot of stuff.
So, are, are we, what are we doing with the study, where are we keeping, just pump track, just develop city, develop pump track?
Sure.
Okay, so to reduce confusion, we have a last call, which is to put a pump track in Beacon Hill Park over here. I don't want people to go, oh, I thought that was a pump track. Would people be okay with eliminating it from specifically Beacon Park? So we're not confused, if you, if you're interested in pump track, go to that.
Yeah.
Okay. Other champions? Other champions?
Yeah, number three.
Yeah.
This was my suggestion, um, and it's, it's worth it, designate a subcommittee, a housing advisory subcommittee, so not necessarily A J C as a subcommittee, big recommendations for, um, development block grants. We know that there is an underutilization of some of those funds for housing, and I think that this would be a really easy way to fill one of their housing action plan, and it would also help bring in those. And they now.
Those are points. One thing I would have with that is, um, like, the Boys and Girls Club, and our, the, the associations that aren't associated with housing, um, that are very legitimate, that we all care about, including housing, and anybody cares about housing. But they wouldn't have that, that advocacy, uh, before a, a group that is strictly with housing, and that's, take that's the intent of the council, we used to have a dedicated to housing, and not have each other's social services provided for our children, or, or other means, uh, you know, then it would be a痛快. Uh, I'm not there yet, I, I think that, of course, it also forms a good function, and there's some other organizations that form a good function, and I'm not sure the housing commission would, uh, fully represent their interest.
That's totally understandable, there is very specific allocations with the funds and how they can be spent. In the housing category, there is underutilization, there is a strong advocacy there.
Sure.
There are people coming forward to that, but for the nonprofit sector, we're very lucky, we have folks tuned into that, and there, there were something to, um, applying, receiving those funds every, every year, so we don't need help on that side, but we need help with the underutilization for the housing.
And I understand, I would like to sort of consider, consider, you know, the groups in the organization in the community and other representation on the, on the committee. That there was people representation on the committee, or whatever, or, uh, uh, at least adequate representation and open mind to, anyway.
Yeah, we're starting to debate the topic, and we just didn't know what the topic is, and that you could champion for it.
So I was going to say that the, the, uh, housing aspect of the pump keep, uh, doesn't compete so well.
That is correct, that is.
They're competing.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Other champions? Other champions on this one, on any of these items? Five through nine, under same goal, preserve our parks and restore their use to city taxpayers. Maintain city streets according to schedule. Redevelopment, redevelop K-Man Bowl into a skating rink. Develop Dollar Mountain incline feature and purchase Gilbert Creek and X-Time Parks from the school district.
I'm going to advocate for number eight, develop Dollar Mountain incline feature. I think some of you may know about this, most of you probably do not, but, um, what it, what it's akin to is there's this, uh, feature in Colorado called Banter incline. Basically what it is, is it's this stairway straight up mountain that's made out of railroad ties, and it's all engineered and everything, but, um, having a feature at Dollar Mountain that is a little more unique than just, uh, trails. We were to incorporate a feature where we had, you know, this, this stairway, you know, they're widening up the mountain, people, um, go up. Honestly, it's, it would be a huge draw. It's, it's unique, uh, the one that I was at in Colorado, so many people were there. You know, people come to it because it's something that you can more easily see. So I think it would really have drawn in this trail system, really get more people out there, just make it all out of that.
So is that for hikers, for people who walk vice up and ride down?
Uh, it's mostly for hikers, yeah.
It's a great workout.
They do well. Like, the one in Colorado, people walk up, and they take trails down, but you could go down the stairs if you wanted to.
I like, um, I like it, because it almost, um, it makes it a little bit more of a tourist attraction to me than trails. Like, it, it kind of helps define Dollar Mountain as a feature. So I thought it was, you know, I like, you know, to, to, to find, if you just look at it, you can see a big trail, but, or whatever, but, um, it kind of helps make it a little more special than just hiking by the trails.
Clear, quite hundred percent.
Because one thing I like, I like other feedback.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. And be what?
It could be better than that, it's time for you wouldn't like on a, on a trail. Might want to go for hiking if you knew that.
Any other champions on, or any questions on what they mean?
I have a question at nine, I thought we had a discussion with District Seven about over three, sixteen parks. I thought they said, did it mean higher, if it first?
It fizzled out, it was about a year and a half ago, or a year ago, or something like that.
Did we have a lease agreement with them? The discussions to purchase fizzled out. I, this, this one's mine, I think that, you know, it's not necessarily top priority, but I think we need to eventually put some effort into, appearing those sites, because there's concern among staff, you don't want to put a lot of, you don't want to invest a lot of money into those sites if you don't own them. So I know that that's been something all day, especially Gilbert Creek Park, because there's that old Darryl softball field, it really doesn't make use for anything anymore. And we don't really want to dump much money into it if the school district comes in. So if we can figure out a way where over a long period of time, twenty, thirty years, we're, you know, giving the school district a little bit of money, and then eventually it paid off when we have it, um, I think it's something that we should probably do, because those are, those are obviously going to be city parks. I mean, Gilbert Creek's obviously going to be city parks, Portola, um, so it's natural that we should have this ownership.
You may actually be able to use other things besides general fund, like potentially system development charge to use for part acquisition or something like that, so. We have a big board.
And the school district would be, they're just waiting for us to cover them, they're not going to cover them last month, so we need to initiate that.
I have a couple of questions. Do we need to stay streets according to schedule, unless you know what that means? I don't.
Are you guys on schedule?
Yeah.
Well, actually, the streets, we're doing.
When you go to schedule.
Tell us my question, what are we talking about?
That, that's an infrastructure that is, you know, we, we can always do more, but we actually, I think, the last time I looked at our pavement management index, we're in pretty good shape.
Yeah, we're in pretty good shape.
Uh, compared to like some of our other underground utilities and stuff.
I mean, yes, we're, we can always do more, um, you know, we're at about the max that we could do from a staffing perspective. But we can spend more, we can overlay more, we can practice a little more, we'll have to just talk about manpower.
Okay, I just wondered when you came, and then also, because we're our parks and restore their use to city taxpayers. I mean, that's kind of one of those ones that really we all like, we're kind of under, under the assumption, so I'm just. Where we had that long discussion yesterday about bolster community response team, who increased law enforcement. Where is the city park department coming for, is that something we need to do? Can you show me?
This is a council comment.
I know, I'm just going to say, I'm just trying to get you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm related.
I, I.
It seems redundant to me. It seems redundant to me.
Yeah.
Did this come out of the committee forum?
No, this is all council.
We're all council, okay, sorry.
Whoever put that up there, are they okay with us calling it redundant, by you, the other two items, one is keeping the park's planning, park's staffing, and. And the other community response team.
Do you want us to, that's council, are you okay with scratching, scratching five, the objections?
I don't know who would like it, who would like, I guess I'm fine.
Okay, okay, let's do, uh, let's do that then. Number five would be scratching, okay. Any other champions? Objectives, council objectives carried forward, uh, enhance a safe and secure environment, develop an urban interface wildfire resilience plan, increase proficiency and practical time within patrol, community service officers and cadet operations, and enhance emergency preparedness. There are items that are in, in the plan right now that we're actively doing, but they were listed today. They're listed, but we're actively doing these things, so there's no, we didn't see a reason for them to be there. But we wanted to highlight your, what your thoughts were.
So they just stay on the plan?
They stay on the plan right now, yeah, because we're actively doing these things. We've got actions associated with it. Under ensure efficient and effective operations, a couple more comments from council to continue our focus on, create a city climate task force, which we're, we're working on. Pursue fulfilling the positions of the information coordinator and higher parks superintendent. Uh, and then continued under a facilitated environment, we've got explore urban renewal agency opportunities for K-Man Plaza, which we're actively pursuing that. Explore partnership opportunities to enhance Grand Pass Airport, promote mixed-use development in downtown and surrounding areas. Enhance commercial district to create quality shopping and dining experiences. Encourage environment, which provides for growth of affordable housing opportunities, there's a number of those underneath there that were mentioned that were, that are just currently in, in the, active in the plan. And that's explore different ways that legislation can both encourage and provide to develop housing, facilitate development of homeless shelter, and aggressively gear up for implementation of House Bill 2001. Continuing with the housing thing, things that were mentioned, develop market affordable housing programs, develop two or more approved ADU plans, which are in the plan, it's in the plan. Use urban renewal agency to incentivize development of mobile housing by Winko, and facilitate development of affordable housing. Your question, objectives carried forward, council comments was plan and develop infrastructure, welcome center facade improvements, we talked about that. Ensure water infrastructure needs are met, build a new water treatment plant, we're working on that. Ensure transportation infrastructure needs are met, develop a parking musty manager plan, we're working on that. Design Allen Creek, and design Allen Creek Road project, which we're actively working on. Ensure bicycle pedestrian path needs are met, pedestrian bicycle, uh, community, uh, community connectivity, that's it, that's just one that's still always being worked on. Support development of Broad River Greenway. Develop a forest stewardship and recreational use plan for Dollar Mountain, restore, replace K-Man Pool, upgrade and/or relocate the skate park. Reassess the, the purpose and usage of Gilbert Creek Park and redesign it to better meet the neighborhood needs, and upgrade and repurpose West Home Park. Under provide environment to help preserve and enhance Grand Pass's historical assets, develop an historic design overlay for the area bounded by Long Ridge, Washington, Eight, and Staten Streets, and develop a tree candy program. That concludes council's comments on strategic goals.
Maybe I missed this one, but I was hoping to champion. Uh, one for by ways about identify multimodal enhancements for north and south, or Gilbert Creek Park, Allen Creek Road, is that?
Okay, so let's see where that would be.
Are we still, are we still other ones in consolidating?
What's that?
Are we still sort of consolidating?
If there's something you'd like to consolidate, then we definitely can, let's see. Are you going to?
Number seventeen, maintain.
There wasn't an opportunity to champion, maybe, or this is.
Uh, well, that was, that was, that was from the committee, these were just council.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
But if you got, you got the floor now, so if you'd like to champion it, go, go for it.
Give us some dots, everybody, that's all.
Oh, okay, wow. All right, any other questions? All right, so why don't we take a break, we'll come back. I've lost them. It's gone, why don't we take a break? You guys already are.